Okay, thank you. Okay, we're here on Tuesday, June 4th, and we'll call the meeting to order just a few moments after seven. And our first item is a referral from the Town Board. This is a local law amendment pursuant to the municipal home rules, Section 10 Local Law 13, not 2018. And the Town Board has referred to the Planning Board, the local law, to extend the current moratorium by six months in connection with the downtown. So, very briefly, you know, the town has employed consultants to work on the coming up with a new zoning code, form code in certain sections of the downtown, and it probably won't even be ready within the next six months, but I guess that they can just do it in increments of six months. So, are there any questions, issues on it?
I have nothing.
Right? If not, I guess our position is we support the extension of the moratorium.
Okay.
Okay? Do you want to give our two cents?
I have to wait until they call.
I know.
But, yes.
But, and the other issue, I guess we can give our two cents on, it's not on the agenda, but we all received memos, I think, copies of the memos regarding the MPT at Chapcoa Crossing. And Lieutenant Carroll's suggesting that, since everything has been working well, that they not do another timed report unless something changes. So, it seems like a reasonable position. I guess the Town Board Supervisor has supported that position. The only thing I would recommend to the applicant is that we're coming up on, what is the date?
July 9th.
July 9th. Where the TCO lapses. So, if there's going to be a need to go beyond July 9th, it would be probably prudent to get, start to get the materials in sooner than later. We go on hiatus in August. So, just a word to the applicant, if you're going to be done by July 9th, no problem. So, you'll be all set. Okay?
It's not just done with the roadwork, it's done with all the conditions of the prior Planning Board and Town Board resolutions pertaining to the retail.
Right. There's quite a few.
Right now, they're about 30 percent done.
With those? Okay. So, Bob has been keeping the chart with the applicant, I presume?
Matrix keeper, yes.
Right, the matrix.
Between Matt and Bob.
Matt does a lot of work with the.
At Timebomb, seems like the movie.
Yes, he does.
I have a question about police presence. I have no problem with it, save perhaps graduation day. Is that something they do normally?
I don't know. And again, that's really, the Town Board's in charge of the traffic issues, so it's really their domain.
And save the traffic issues, which we don't.
But it could be something just that the party's always going to think about. It's always a big mess, a lot of traffic.
Yeah, we can also, I can also email the police department and make sure that they're aware that, you know, be aware of.
Yeah, we're having students graduate this year.
Because I recall, it's in their discretion to provide whatever police service is required, so.
Yeah, they may have police there regularly.
Right. But outside of that one, perhaps scheduled issue, I think the observations have been, things have been running smoothly without problems. One accident, which had nothing to do with the MPT, had all occurred, so it seems to be fine, and we all seem to be managing and getting through. Okay. Our next item is an informal hearing for a pending application. This is Chapcoa Crossing SG Chapcoa A and B LLC. Application for a preliminary subdivision plan for a master subdivision, preliminary subdivision plan for East Village, and a site development plan for East Village, 480 Bedford Road, New York Route 117.
Good evening. My name is Diana Coliff, and I'm from the Promobital Bell O'Donnell and Mark Winegarden couldn't be here tonight. We, as you recall, were last before you on April 16th, and at that meeting, we presented the plans for the East Village, and heard comments from your board and from the staff. The changes were incorporated by Denny Ton Schwalbe, and the revised plans were submitted on May 13, along with the revised environmental analysis. Since then, we received comments from Mr. Coleman and Ms. Turney Hall, so, and that's going to be addressed by Mr. Andrew Ton, excuse me, tonight. As you might imagine, we have been working on the petitions to the Town Board, so our goal is to get to a point where we might feel, where you would feel comfortable enough with the major aspects of the plan, to have that joint session with the Town Board.
Right.
Okay. Excuse me, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ton.
Thank you, Diana. Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
We had a, quite a full package for you this month, besides the updated site plan drawings and the environmental analysis binder. We prepared, as per your request, a list of the, a global list of the modifications from the 2015 PDCP. And in looking over the list, and I say modifications, I would characterize many of them as refinements in going from a concept plan to a site plan. Some of them were derived from discussions with Town Staff and the Police Department and the Fire Department to improve circulation for fire access. Other changes developed as a result of our experience, our collective experience with DEP during the stormwater review for the retail plan, and then there were other modifications that were discussed in conjunction with your board over the past period. So, there's that listing to kind of refresh our memories, looking back at all the different developments since 2015. We've also prepared a series of studies in response to the discussion during the April meeting, and I'm prepared, and as Diana mentioned, we received memos from Steve and Sabrina, so I'm prepared to either go through the submission, hit the highlights, work off the memos, whatever is your pleasure.
I think it would be useful, as Sabrina's done it and you've done it, to really focus on those things that are really either enhancements or changes from what was originally proposed and approved by the Town Board. I think we should really focus on those points and see if we can make some progress for you this evening.
Andy, there's also a memo from Bob.
He gave my memo two weeks ago.
I didn't receive it.
I got it. I got it.
He never got it.
You never got it, really?
No.
Hold on.
He did it purposely because I was going away, so I gave it two weeks ago.
This is a very bad lesson, because we'll have Bob doing this very late in the future.
This is the one time he does it early.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Let me read it. I will read it, it's all good.
It will kill our audience.
Yeah.
But I think that would be, don't you think that would be a useful way to do this, really tackle the points?
Give it a try.
Yep, okay.
So, might we follow Sabrina's memo? Is that, what's, I mean, that's.
Is that okay?
Yeah, however you want to proceed.
I think that makes good sense, yeah.
Is that your June 3rd memo?
Yes. Thanks, Carrie. You know, I kind of went through, you know, as the Chair had, you know, had said, that really focus on the things that had changed. You know, there was one change regarding your interpretation of coverage and the calculations on what you calculated coverage on, and I believe Matt has corrected that after he saw my memo. And then there's inconsistencies, and I know that we're in betwixt in a sense of 62 bedrooms, 29 three-bedroom units, 71 two-bedrooms, 23 bedroom units. There's two different representations in, on the plan in the zoning analysis table, so, you know, we just need to go with the one that you prefer at this point, to make sure that we have the correct information and the plan set. I think that the kind of heart of my memo to the board is really to identify the decisions, where you have decision points. You know, we spent a lot of time working with the applicant, and the submission includes a lot of summary of kind of the extent that they've gone to, to address previous comments. And we can start, you know, the biggest change, I think, is the size in the MFPD, the increase in the building size, and the increase in the number of bedrooms. Some of that falls within your jurisdiction, some of it falls within the Town Board's jurisdiction. And speaking with Town Council, we thought that it would be best if the applicant was to represent a revised MFPD PDCP in its entirety to the Town Board, which identified all of the changes. The question is, which changes does the, that are within the Planning Board purview, does the Planning Board support? And I think the Town Board would be interested in your opinions on those elements that are in their purview, that they are looking to you for guidance on. So, with that said, you know, anything that's discussed here, we advise you to submit a complete package of all changes to the Town Board, and that may be ripe for a joint board discussion, as we've been discussing. So, just keep that in the back of your mind, Andy, as, you know, we talk about some of these issues tonight. I know there was that desire. To kind of talk about the changes in size, on average, each unit itself has increased by 383 square feet. There has been, the units now have basements. The applicant says that the basement issue was left silent under the approved MFPD PDCP. The size changes have been incorporated in increased length and width of units. The MFPD land area has also been increased from 30.5 acres to 32 acres, there instead of .7 acres for the auditorium. The discussions with the Town Board have resulted in 1.1 acres for the auditorium. The changes in the bedrooms, we've discussed, I think, previously, looking to add nine more bedrooms to the site. And one of the things that the applicant has mentioned is that they say that the change in the unit size has been driven by market forces. You know, the town doesn't really get into market changes, or what sells, what doesn't sell, but we've asked for, and I continue to ask for, more information as to what they base this on, because I think that the size really gets to a lot of the impacts that you are forced to think about. The increase in disturbance from 19 acres to 21.8 acres, and increase in impervious surface from 29.5 acres, or 2.95 acres to 8.6 acres.
Sabrina, let me ask you about that question, that number. The 2.95, is that what is currently impacted by the current development at the location? So, the delta is 2.95 to 8.6?
From this development.
From, from today?
From today.
Not from the PDCP?
No.
Right. In other words, the existing development.
Just the auditorium, basically.
Exactly, and whatever roads are there, sidewalks, et cetera, so.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure, because it looked dramatic, but I don't think it's.
It's not that dramatic.
Exactly, okay.
It's not that dramatic.
In fact, if it's 8.6 now, what was it before? Was it 8.4, was it 7.8? Do we have any sort of benchmark on it?
It was 2.95 acres, 2.95 acres to 8.6.
Right.
2.95 is the auditorium and the parking lot of visitors today.
Correct, is what's there today.
Right. What I'm saying is, what was the?
PDCP?
Yes.
The delta's an acre between the PDCP and the current site plan.
Okay, good.
Okay. Changes to the coverage, and again, the math, we need to make sure that the math is correct on the coverage, but there's increases to the open coverage. The change to the loop road, the 650-foot-long stretch, where they proposed to raise it, cut and fill, and, you know, they were balancing cut and fill at 60,000 cubic yards, it's now at 69,000 cubic yards. They are proposing to keep all the fill on site. Raising the loop road does help to keep that fill on site, or the cut on site, rather. The impacts to the schoolchildren based on the additional bedrooms, they're looking at three additional schoolchildren, plus for the additional bedrooms, for a total of 43 schoolchildren that they estimate coming from the site. There is updated information from the Chapcoa Central School District, from their budget information, which provides the rationale for that analysis. The increase in the width of the roadways, the 20-foot interior roadways with a nine-foot parallel parking spaces along the main access driveway, that was what was planned initially under the MFPD PDCP. We are now looking at 24-foot roadways and eight-foot width on parallel parking spaces. There's also a minimum distance of 40 feet between the fronts of certain townhome groupings, and a lot of the road width and the distance discussions have occurred with the town's Fire Department, so that's based on changes that the Fire Department has requested.
So, is that 40-foot distance, is that a Fire Department request?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then, the last issue that really is affected by the change in the sizes of the units, you know, that is the driveway length. Initially, the MFPD PDCP had driveway lengths of six, between 16 and 18 feet. Right now, we're looking at driveway lengths between eight and 13 feet. And this has been a discussion that all of you have been discussing for a while, and something that really is going to be a driver of whether or not we can proceed under the existing layout of the PDCP. So, I would say that that is an issue that you folks should spend some time tonight talking about, so that, and working with the applicant, to see where we end up on that issue, because that really is a huge driver of the site layout. Another change, to kind of switch to another area, is the demolition of the gatehouse. And one of the intentions under the original MFPD PDCP.
Easy for you to say.
Yeah, right? Was to, was to keep the existing gatehouse. The applicant has said that it doesn't meet their program, if you will, and that when they had a structural guy come in and do the analysis, it really wasn't structurally sound. And they submitted a lot of information, you know, their analysis that they had conducted on the building, but one area that they really need to provide more information to the town about is, what does that demolition consist of? Is there asbestos in the building? How are they going to do the demolition? That's all the information that we need for the environmental analysis. And then there's the impact of the Chapcoa Performing Arts Center. When we did the initial MFPD PDCP, the Chapcoa Performing Arts Center was to be demolished. We now have programmed the Chapcoa Performing Arts Center, the auditorium, where it is in active use. The applicant has provided some landscaping, they've separated a lot of the units from the Chapcoa Performing Arts Center. You know, there's still some concerns about noise coming from the Performing Arts Center. Those are kind of the main issues that I think the board needs to weigh in on, the bedroom count, which is a Town Board change, but they're going to want to hear from you on that. The driveway length, the size of the units, the, everything that relates to size of units and earth moving, the cut and fill, the loop road, the berm, what I didn't mention here was the berm behind the units between Cowden Lane, and Steve can speak to more of that effort. But I think that the applicant has proposed kind of the best working plan that we could come up to this point, and it's really up to the board to really wrestle with these items and try and come to agreement on them.
Wasn't, sorry, wasn't there some concern about parking, adequate parking for visitors?
They've adjusted in this submission.
Understood.
They have counted two spaces in each of the garage, even though one is required, they have highlighted that second space, but they have placed along the roadways adequate parking. Their parking numbers are in conformance.
Could I ask a question before we get into that procedurally? And that deals with this auditorium, we still don't have the property lines agreed upon? Is there something that we can do to help that, or are we an obstacle? I'm not aware of it, but what is hanging, pulling that up?
No, I think the board at the last meeting pretty much said there were two options, and said either one was okay. And I think it's up to that, the Town Board and the committee to finalize.
The Town Board had sent a final comment letter regarding, there were two proposals that the applicant had submitted back to us based on conversation, joint conversation. The Town Board had submitted their preferred plan, and we haven't gotten anything back, the Town Board hasn't received anything back confirming that direction.
Oh, from the applicant?
From the applicant.
Yes, but there were, there's a slight adjustment in the boundary based on the two plans, and we have, in this set of plans, shown the preferred option for the Town Board in terms of the boundary. So, the outer envelope is per the Town Board's preference.
So, we would want something in writing back to the Town Board stating that that boundary is the one that you agree to.
Don't we also want a subdivision application reflecting those lines at this point?
The preliminary plat that we've submitted reflects that line.
Okay.
We've updated that plat.
The, I think it would be helpful for the Town Board to have communication from you based on the last communication that Bob and I had sent you per the Town Board, so that we could kind of close the loop and confirm that that boundary is the boundary that is on the plans, will be part of the subdivision, and then move forward from there.
I'm sure that that's the right sequence, but however, it seems to me that, unless I'm mistaken, the Planning Board still has a role to play with respect to various aspects of the plan that really are under our, I believe are under our authority to weigh in on.
I think this is the attempt to get to a point where they can present a preliminary subdivision for the Planning Board to look at. That's your jurisdiction. They're still wrestling with distinctions between boundaries based on discussions they're having with the Town Board on the side. That gets them to the, when those are resolved, that then gets them to the point where they can present an application to the board, and then the board has subdivision jurisdiction.
So, fair enough. So, that's, I'm just responding to an exhibit in the submission for this meeting, which shows, I guess, is where the Town Board and the applicant are currently, with respect to these lines, or who drew these lines?
Yes, with respect to the lines.
Who drew the lines, I'm sorry?
We drew, the lines reflect option B. The choice was, are the accessible parking spaces on the inside or the outside of that access aisle?
No, I understand that. Actually, that's true, but the lines that I thought that, in the very preliminary look that we had at it, without making a judgment either way, just offering some thoughts, I don't think that this property line over here is what was talked about. That's either here than there, nor there. It, I just am asking, it's option B, is that option, is that the option that the Town Board is working toward? There's this exhibit here.
Yeah, and option B.
Where does this stand in the conversations between the Town Board?
The conversations is that the Town Board reviewed option A, option B, and they presented an alternative option, an option B favored. I don't know if it was that one, which is why I wanted Andy to respond to the Town Board's last request.
The base, the base is the same, that diagram is for a different purpose than presenting the auditorium plan.
Okay.
That.
This is where the drop-off.
Yes, that's, that's the drop-off study that we were asked to prepare last.
So, that's just for this cut through here?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Because, just so you have a heads-up on this, I, this is actually not option B or A with respect to the drop-off in front of the building, and that will potentially affect property lines, traffic, et cetera, et cetera. So, as long as we understand that it's only about this connection, this discussion tonight.
That's what it's presented for.
Then, okay. But there's a lot more, I think, to talk about inside with respect to this part of the.
I believe we're talking about that, with, that's under discussion with the Town Board.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. And so, where that goes, then eventually we'll get, hopefully sooner than eventually, to the point where we have, you know, subdivision application, preliminary subdivision application to us. Okay. I just wanted to check on that one, make sure that we weren't holding you up. Could impact my bonus. Bob, do you want to run through your memo? For the benefit, you might want to do it in more detail than usual, since it hasn't been sent around.
Basically, a few months back, a few months, I met with the stormwater person, flew me over my previous comments several months ago. These items that are on this memo, ST 1 through ST 15, were not addressed in any way secret form in this last minute.
Okay.
They're still outstanding, some of them are pretty significant.
Yep.
Some of them are not, I'm not going to bore you with the details.
I'm going to get diggus ones.
But I went over these, all of them, with their stormwater concern, I believe she might have made that.
Not just yet.
So, I don't know if those are not, but they were still outstanding, they had to do with the flow of that, just go over them real quickly. Some of them had to do with the extended detention basin, as far as the height, should be looked at by the E C, and go over them real quickly.
Bob, a question I had, on ST 7, you referred to an existing stone masonry wall. Where is that? Which one is that?
That's when you're coming up, that's on, I don't know what building. Andy, what building is that? It's on the north side of building.
700 or 600?
Where you're going to build a new stormwater basin?
Oh, okay.
700.
700, yeah. Basically, there's an existing wall there, and they want to build another wall on top of that and put a basin there, which is going to be the main basin, where most of the water is going to be retained, so I just want them to make certain, when all the extra additional structural loading is imposed on that wall, that will be structurally sound.
Sure, sure.
And that's what ST 7 is about.
Okay.
Does it have to be submitted to you? The new wall? Is it?
Yeah, I'm going to need a report to make certain when they're doing the new wall, and the loading from the water from the basin, when it's fully intact and low, it's going to be okay.
So, you'll need calculation.
Well, absolutely.
Yeah. Good. Just wanted to make sure of that, because.
I'm going to need a full report on that, yes. Basically, ST 9 is buoyancy calculations, they have underground systems, obviously you'd have to provide buoyancy calculations on that. ST 10, of course, will say they'll be self-contained, running favorably, that they're in approximately nine drainage trucks, approximately 1200 feet, which collects the very stored from the East Village, so that's ST 10. ST 11 is a standard, going to need to get a SWIP from the D C on that. Obviously, they still have to get DEP. Andy, how's DEP review coming on this?
It's tracking with this one, but we wanted to make sure that we were relatively set before we submitted to DEP.
ST 13 is just basically going over to make sure all the pipes are correct, and they have the right pitches to them for construction. ST 14 and 15 are standard maintenance and performance bonding that we need to get, that the Town Board has to look at and approve, and along with Town Council. And that's pretty much all the stormwater items, which are outstanding, still, and I get the G C 1. As you know, the applicant has submitted substantial engineering technical information about the reduction of these driveways. On the original plan, as approved by the board, they were actually 15 to 20 feet. Now, they reduced them down to five to eight. So, from the technical merits, they seem to be okay. However, I put in here at the end, the Planning Board should decide as to whether this reduction is acceptable, or requiring the applicant to increase the apron width, as shown on the PDCP, as approved by the Town Board. G C 2 is the same type of logic. They have submitted quite a bit of technical information to demonstrate from a technical guideline that the turning movements of the passenger vehicles are okay. However, the Planning Board should decide as to whether they think this turning movement, which encroaches into the other lane, is acceptable, or they have to increase the apron width, which would mitigate it, or increase the roadway width.
So, would the, on G C 2, just from my own understanding, are you saying that the current aprons are, I'm not quite understand, understand why it impacts the turning radius, and why someone has to cross out into the roadway to get into a driveway, which is, I presume, the same width, but just shorter?
Right, but I mean, the minimum, minimum turning radius for a passenger vehicle is, I believe, 20 feet. So, if you have an apron which is five to eight feet, you're not.
Oh, they haven't completed the turn?
Right. I mean, you need 20 feet to complete that turn.
I see.
You'll never be able to get into the driveway with an eight-foot apron.
I see, I get it. Unless they go out onto the other side, okay.
Unless you go onto the other side, which they demonstrated.
Right.
However, does the Planning Board think that's good planning?
Okay.
And then, there's another.
Well, and there's another issue too, that the cars will tend to drive in and then they have to back out to get onto the road, which makes it even more complicated.
I mean, you know, you can have the situation where someone doesn't know that they have to go on the other lane. They're going to try to make the turn, they're going to find out real quick. Doesn't work out too well.
Okay.
Is it going to be an open curb, over the grass? Could be a problem if they don't realize they have to go all the way in the other lane.
Okay.
Same logic with the turning movements for the truck, which is an issue forty. Same logic with the turning movements for the fire trucks. Keep in mind, when they submitted the turning route movement and AutoCAD, it doesn't go up any sidewalks, which is good. However, in every instance, the truck does have to go entirely on the other lane. So, again, they demonstrated that it doesn't go up on the sidewalk, which is the worst-case scenario. However, the planning board has to decide as to whether that's acceptable for every time a truck comes in, it's going to be going over to the adjacent oncoming lane every instance.
Is that a fire truck or any truck?
Both, issue forty and a fire truck.
Does it also apply to school buses going in to pick up children?
Similar, yes. Issue forty.
There would be no school buses on these interior roads, on the service drives.
Have you already discussed with the bus company about how they want to construct their booths for pickup?
No, but these, I think Mr. Celia's referring to the shared alleyways that provide access to the residential driveways and those wouldn't have buses on them, sorry.
Bob, would your comments apply equally, just so I can follow along with regard to road A, which is, you know, wider as opposed to, you know, the more narrow, you know, service-type roads?
Well, they could run along the main routes and even along the main routes, they had it encroached under the oncoming traffic.
So, if we wanted to go from road A proceeding north to get onto road F, that would be the issue, I guess.
Absolutely.
But going around the curve on road A, you know, just going around the curve back down to the loop road, they would be able to stay on that side of the road, wouldn't they?
Yes.
Okay.
They didn't present a full one to twenty scale to take a look at.
Yes, if I may, the, the discussion and the thought is that the, we're trying to balance the traditional design, which calls for balancing, if not favoring, the pedestrian over the vehicle with providing wide enough pavements for any vehicle to turn at any time. Now, part of that relates to speed and it relates to site distance. We have, we believe it is appropriate and have stated that we would limit the speed to fifteen miles per hour. We believe that most of, all of the, the shared service drives are for, primarily for the use of those people who are driving back there, so to get into their driveway. So, hopefully, they would stop for their neighbor to turn into the driveway. The combination of the shorter driveways spurs means that you don't have cars parking in the driveway, so that your, your site distance is ample and fully open as you exit your garage or drive into your garage. So, that combination of sharing that space to be able to provide vehicular circulation while not having traditional wider roads at every location provides the balance to make this a workable, traditional neighborhood community. In addition with the sidewalks, I mean, big focus on the sidewalks. So, there's always a balancing that has to take place and we believe that, you know, working with you over this time, we've, we believe we've achieved that balance. We've tried to achieve that balance.
Question for you, on the school buses, is that set by the applicant or is it set by the Board of Education? I mean, my experience these days is that kids don't walk much more than out their front stoop, but for a bus, but is that something that the Board of Education has determined is perfectly acceptable, that kids will just walk to, I guess, the end of the loop road, et cetera? As they set the bus schedule and the pickups and the bus stops. So, I don't know if it's really within the applicant's purview to say there's not going to be any buses in, on these roads.
On the alleys or the roads?
On the alleys.
Just on the alleys.
On the alleys, of course.
The driveways. The main, they may drive in. I don't know what their policy is for driving into private property.
Right, to get closer to the units.
Yeah. They may pick it up on the, on the main entry road and the loop road rather than the interior east village road anyway. So, those, those roads are certainly.
Is that something where, just to be clear on this in support of the applicant, is that something that we would actually send perhaps a note to the Board of Education? You know, this is being designed in this fashion and we would think that when you set up your schedule for bus stops, you will want to stay on the main roads, you know, road A and the loop road, et cetera?
You know what I'd like to suggest? If we're going to, we're reviewing Bob's comments now, but we're, now we're actually into the substance of the design and you're making a, making a presentation of what your preference is in response to Bob. It would be great if we actually had some visuals so that we could actually look at the conditions we're talking about.
I don't know what the answer on that is, but we can certainly look at that. I guess it seems to be a little boring.
I would think it would be prudent to involve the bus company too.
Absolutely, yes, yep.
Maybe the applicant should have a conversation with the school and report back to you.
See where we have other apartment houses, you know, over by the temple, for instance. There's some apartment houses that are right up against each other. I don't believe that the bus company goes in and goes that way. It picks them up at the corners. So, I'm not positive. So, I think the applicant might want to check with.
Just any site panel do for this discussion.
Other kinds of operations within the town as to how the bus company works and then with Sheila's comments.
With children, there are individual circumstances and there may be necessity for a house pickup, but they generally use smaller vehicles, so.
Sure, right, in those cases, yes.
Are there going to be automatic garage door openers on these units?
I imagine so. I don't know that they've, they're specified, but I presume that's a.
Well, I would say that that would improve safety when the car drives in, the guy doesn't have to get out, abandon the car for, you know, ten to fifteen seconds, hanging out in the street while he opens the garage door. So, I would think that's a safety feature, given the shorter driveways that we have.
Just anything, just that one right there, the color. All we need is the overall site, not that one, overall site plan. Yeah, that was. Okay, this will, this will, me anyway. So, let's go back to the, what we are assuming the school bus route would be to get, to pick up and drop off the children through here. Would it be, we have a.
I think at the, at the most, nope.
Well, Andy, you know, the question is to, you know, forty-three school kids, you know, once you have a conversation with the school district, I think it's in the best interest of time for you to have the conversation with the school district and report back to the board.
Thank you.
You know, are you planning on constructing any bus shelters or anything for the kids to wait in in inclement weather? I don't know.
I, I'm guessing that, I don't know what the applicant's intentions are, but I'm just guessing that the school district would want to have the bus come through here.
Mm-hmm.
Right? They're not going to.
At most, yes.
They could pick up all the kids who are illegally parking at the shopping center.
Is that a second loop?
Do it in the first loop, will help us.
So, the turning radius, the turning radius we're concerned with for school buses would be, I guess, at this intersection and at that intersection would be, right?
I mean, I could just go from experience when I lived in the condominium, Reed Farm. They built a shelter, like Sabrina said, and that bus would just come in, pick up the kids. There was a big, vast, expansive area of roadway network and they just came in, picked up the kids at this one spot, then had a predetermined place to turn around and came back out. I would imagine they would do the same thing here, just speculation. They would probably come in the road on the left, go all the way in and go up on top and probably have a shelter on the south side and the north side, so the kids have an equidistant to walk. It's just money.
Well, I watch, I mean.
Crazy idea.
We're all sort of held hostage by school buses at certain times of the day. And I noticed that, that they used to do this in my neighborhood, they would stop at every house. They would, when I went to school, we used to have to walk to a, to a school bus stop, which would be like only one in the neighborhood. I'm not sure that that's the practice these days because of people's concern about safety and security.
I would recommend, Sabrina said, have them contact the school.
So, it's not up to us to decide that.
That's right.
But, but what I want to get to is the turning radius question that you were concerned about. You said there was a template for school buses, turning radius for school buses. Were you saying, were you suggesting that it was a problem, that these intersections would be a problem here?
Now, if they pulled it from the south, I don't have a clicker. I mean, as far as the turning radius is, I think if they, what I would think, they would come in here, the bus, there would be a shelter there, then they'd come this way, maybe a shelter midstream, then come up this way and go out.
My question is the turning radius though. You said there was a problem.
Yeah, they'd have a problem here, that's where they'd go on both sides. But, you know, when you speak to the D O T, that's their criteria. The last thing you want the bus to do is go up on the sidewalk. If it goes on the adjacent lane, that's a judgment call you have to make on how much it's going to go.
So, this is.
If that's the case, it would be an impact right there.
So, so the turning radius is inadequate in this turn there?
Yes, based on what they showed, it's when they encroach down the other lane.
That is, that is a bit of, that's a concern.
That's for school buses, is it, does it, anything else in that turn? The fire trucks work?
Well, yeah, the fire truck and the W B forty, they all, in every turn, here, 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 here. They all went on the other side of the roadway. So, they encroached on both lanes of the traffic in every instance and every turn they had to make. But getting back to the school bus, it would be only right here. These would probably come from here, here, I would think, and then go up here and go out. They'd have a shelter, shelter, shelter.
Why not go in there?
So, I guess, Bob, I guess, it looks to me that this is a much wider radius than these intersections. So, the school bus could make this turn and not go in the opposite lane, but can't do it here?
Right, that would be the area they'd have to just either increase the geometry of the roadway or widen the road right there.
Can I add one to you?
Sorry about that.
It seems to me that it looks like the school bus would have to encroach on the other, the lane in the ongoing traffic to make the turn there.
Means it doesn't work on that.
I don't, I don't think it could, if there were a car in that other lane, I don't think the school bus would be able to complete the turn.
Right, I'm trying to think if they showed that movement.
And I think that's fairly standard, that people stop when a school bus comes. The idea is not, we're not designing a highway, so it's a, it's a neighborhood and, and hopefully we let our fellow drivers move through it appropriately. We could certainly widen all the radii, but I think that for the other twenty-three hours and forty-five minutes of the day, you'd have more roadway than you would want and that you would need. So, I think the sharing of that roadway, assuming it's safe, and we believe, we believe it is, but we'll look at, we'll look at Bob's analysis.
Any criteria that doesn't go up onto the curb and the sidewalk?
Right, we certainly don't have.
That's the most, that's the worst case scenario.
Unacceptable.
That's unacceptable, yes.
So, Bob, your analysis was for the twenty-foot roadway or the twenty-four-foot roadway? Because there are twelve-foot lanes now instead of ten.
There's all the turns in the road going down the twenty-four-foot road and the twenty-foot road, all of them.
Okay.
We'll look at those corners in detail and make sure it works.
But on the other hand, to Andy's point, I think there's also a balance here because if you make these wider, you're going to invite speeds in excess of fifteen miles per hour, no matter which post. So, we have to work with this balance exactly right.
And we did encourage the applicant to narrow up the rooms, to lower the speed to make it more pedestrian-friendly.
Correct, correct.
So, let's just not forget that we kind of asked them to go this direction.
Right, right. Okay. We interrupt you, Bob, you're.
Oh, that's okay.
Around G C four or so?
G C one up to G C four, there are all of the same logic behind them. Technical comments, G C five, basically, they should show the type of surface material that you'd be using for the turnaround, G C five. G C six, discussions with the Commission of Public Works, you would like to have a looping water main, I need the clicker again if you don't mind. He always likes to loop everything. I mean, you have the water main coming up here, you'd like to have it come down here entirely counted. Unfortunately, if it goes through wetlands, that's something the planning board has to decide, but that's the loop Mr. Morshell would like to loop down. And you always get better fire flow and more, and better pressure when you do a loop throughout town. So, it's always a good thing for the whole, not only just this community here, but for the whole town, so both benefit from that. I don't see it on the plans, but that was something he'd like to see, something he could discuss. G C seven is a lot really having to do with the walls. Obviously, there's many walls on this site. They would give you global stability analysis and complete structural analysis, and these are just standard notes A, B, and C, I like to see on the plans. G C eight is basically just provide water main profiles. G C nine is an engineer's cost estimate. When they get to that point for the whole site, that's going to be needed for the tree replacement, wetlands mitigation, stormwater plant, indoor determine performance bonding, and the inspection fees. And obviously, yes.
On G C seven, the second sentence, I'm having a hard time understanding that as English. There's something missing in there.
Where it starts off with therefore?
Also due to the height of the proposed retaining walls, then you've got a long parenthetical and it kind of ends in an upon, I'm not sure.
Hmm, also do the height of the proposed retaining walls and some, it's just, oh, wait, it's, it's, something else, something there. Oh, yeah, that could use some help, that sentence, sorry about that. But the bottom line is they have to provide all the proper documentation.
I had no problem. I thought it was imperfect engineering.
Well, that's an attorney looking at it.
That was the problem.
I'm glad another fellow engineer stuck up for me. Sorry about that. I'll fix it on the next one.
Question about the walls. In addition, I mean, you have B here where it's going to meet certain specifications, et cetera. Do we have information, I know these are going to be, the suggestion is manufactured walls, do we have information from the manufacturer in terms of expected, you know, lifetime of these and maintenance, what is required, et cetera, if anything?
They didn't submit, they submitted photographs of the type and they submitted sections of how it would be designed and constructed, but they did not submit any cut sheets of that type of information to date.
But in the global calculations, they're going to have to provide a lot of information as to how strong those walls are too, I would think.
Of course, but I think they should provide cut sheets for the planning board to take a look at as far as their longevity, but you did not do that. That's Bob's point.
Yeah, longevity is an issue because I think it's something that the town would like to avoid having to take over and having to fix twenty years from now. I don't know what the.
Yeah, I don't think Jerry would be too happy about that.
If he's still there, he might be happy about it.
We certainly wouldn't intend to build anything that would only last twenty years because the buildings will last longer than that.
Of course, so I think we should get those manufacturer specs, what have they.
They did not submit that.
They probably have that somewhere. As part of the analysis that you will undertake.
G C ten, obviously, they had to get approval from the county. All the subdivision plan comments, I don't want to bore everyone with the details, that's just technical information which I think should be on there, which I have not submitted yet. I had comments for the master subdivision plan comments and the preliminary subdivision plan comments. I mean, there's a lot of work involved with this, but these have been on my last two memos and I haven't seen anything yet.
And it seems to me that we need to get at least, you know, S through S fifteen, ST fifteen, whatever it is, don't we have to get those really kind of understood and down before we can really proceed with D E P?
Absolutely. In relation to that, then we want to talk about the timing of getting that SWIP reviewed by D E P and.
Well, yes, as far as timing.
There's some mention in the Arab papers about deferring that to the building stage.
I would recommend that the SWIP by D E P and the sign up by the town for the SWIP be done prior to the signing of the subdivision plan and/or the site development plan. We never, I don't think in the past, have really made it prior to a B P in this particular case. Because of the magnitude and the significance of this, it would be, all had to be done prior to either A, the subdivision plan being signed, or the site development plan. That would be my recommendation.
Typically, the planning board adopts that as part of its approval, so.
That is correct. That can be clearly put in the resolution as well.
Okay.
Okay.
As I said, we're looking to gain concurrence on the plan with the planning board before we go back to DEP, so that we don't have to keep passing back and forth.
Understood. Steve, you have a memo with some detail?
Before we go there, I mean, I just, just to sort of synopsize a little bit, that we've talked about, you know, coming out of the, in and out of the driveways, improved sideline with short driveways. I, I, I'd like to request that you consider seriously automatic door openers, you know, on the garage doors. Secondly, to summarize the school, I think having input from the school at all, you know, it would be good. You've got issues on turn radii potentially, shelters potentially, routing, and there's probably an age differential too. I mean, certainly the, the younger children that are going to elementary schools, and maybe even Bell, would have a, a different, I think, busing perhaps, than ones that are just going to walk across the street to the high school. So that might be very helpful for everybody to get input from those outside sources.
We can talk to the district about that.
Okay.
You know what frequently happens in our neighborhoods, and you see it driving around where the buses are operating, is that parents will drive their children to the bus stop and wait for the bus.
Yep.
And then, um, when they pick them up, they drive to the bus stop and, and wait for the bus. And I, depending on how they, the, the, the school district and the bus company manages all of that, there either is an attractive nuisance or not with respect to cars congregating at, at the place, places in the neighborhood where...
That's an excellent point.
Maybe you have, one has some concerns about traffic and congestion and those things. So I'm not suggesting that we need to blow up this plan in order to accommodate that, but I think it would be interesting to have a conversation with the school district and the bus company to have bus service that actually is maybe more frequent in terms of its number of stops, rather than having fewer stops, because that just encourages people to put their kids in the car and drive them and wait.
You know, we have sixty-six occupied apartments on property in public, I'm sorry.
Yeah, please come forward, whoever you are.
I'm speaking tonight. My name is Felix Charney. This guy's probably knew that. I was going to look for Sabrina, Bob, do you know if there are any kids in the two-hundred building?
I do not know.
We have sixty-six occupied units there, and I'm wondering if we have any kids, any of those kids who go to school. Sabrina, are there any kids in the two-hundred building? Do you know if, uh, Walter? You've got two awards for this thing, you know if there are any kids in there?
I, I do believe that there are a couple of kids.
How are those kids being getting to school? Is there a school bus coming in there? I've never seen one.
I don't know if the school bus comes in or they're walking. I do not know.
Because I think there may be an answer in the fact that it's actually operating. I haven't seen a school bus on property.
Well, but therefore there will never be a school bus on the property, I mean...
Well, my, my point, Tom, was that there, if there's kids living there now and they're going to school, somebody must have figured out how they're moving those kids from there to school. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, that would be helpful input too in this whole discussion, so that's great.
You have a shuttle bus riding that's a school bus?
Kids aren't, kids aren't riding the shuttle. That's only one person.
Someone's riding it.
It's only one person.
The shuttle bus.
That's a mix it every day.
We'll find out. I think it's...
Well, I, I think it's an unknown, but it's...
Right, right.
Steve, why don't you run through yours, your, your comments, and then we can dive back into these, these various subjects and tackle each one.
You know, since we last met with, you know, the planning board, we've worked with Andy's team, you know, to see if they could make the modified berm, you know, more of a naturalized slope. And I think we finally have gotten to a plan that I feel comfortable with. And they were able to modify the slopes so that we have, you know, a three-in-one to a five-on-one, you know, slope. And then they were able to modify the, you know, grades as well, so that you could get a nice width between the contours, so that you have a larger planting area. And then, you know, so the overall slopes went from previous plans at about a twenty-five percent slope, they've gone down to about ten to fifteen percent in slope. So, you know, I feel more comfortable that it's a more sustainable and more natural, naturalized, you know, looking slope for that, so... You know, based on that, then I took a look at the planting plan, you know, that they have, and, you know, the objectives early on was to, you know, look at creating, you know, kind of a, just a natural flowing, you know, meadow, you know, savanna that has, you know, trees and shrubs and, you know, ground covers and groupings, you know, in areas. And I think they've done an overall good job, but I, one of the things I would request is that going forward, if they could create a separate sheet in the landscape set of plants, one for the modified berm. You know, it has the plant list and the plant notes, everything on one sheet, so that it's easier to kind of get an overall view instead of having to refer back to, you know, multiple sheets.
Right.
And I would suggest that also with the loop road and other, you know, the stormwater basins as well, you know, that consideration.
Steve, was it clear to me...
I think we need to leave one jar open, at least, for...
Fire.
It's a public meeting.
Public meeting.
Public meeting, yeah, that's it.
Steve, it wasn't clear to me, in the, in the submission here, there are figure one, two, and three, all of which are modified fill slope diagrams as, I guess, alternatives to each other?
Yeah, one of, last time, you may recall, we asked, you know, I suggested that they don't restrict themselves to encroaching within the wetland buffer if it would help create, you know, more of a natural slope. And so I think figure...
Must be three then.
I think it's figure three.
Three is the one that finally has a little less...
Three's the one.
And, you know, Andy's team came back, you know, based on looking in the field, and there's a lot of good young, you know, trees in the proximity of where they would be impacted by grading. And so their recommendation, which I support, is not to encroach that far into the buffer and save those trees instead.
So, no, so it's, it's not three, it's, it's two?
Well, three was the one that they depicted with the grades going all the way down.
I understand, which, which one do you support?
The figure one, it would be the...
Okay. Figure...
Figure one and two, um, just shows a little bit of extension to the east.
One or two, is it?
Yeah, they're both pretty similar in that respect.
Steve, what's, on figure one, what was in, I guess, two? There's some sort of structure, some sort of wall structure, it looks like a...
Semi-circular stump tree.
The reason for that is to preserve a...
Oh, okay, okay.
It's to preserve a large tree, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Yeah, but I, I have a lot of technical questions on just some of the species lists and that, which we can work out with the, you know, the applicant, just to... Yeah, but some of the, some of the key elements, which I think need to be tweaked a little bit, and, you know, I, I want to make sure the board remembers, I mean, we're providing a tremendous benefit to the applicant to lose about twenty thousand cubic yards of fill. You know, so, I mean, it's, you know, they're kind of creating a hardship by keeping it on site, but, you know, it saves a tremendous amount of cost and impact on the road system and everything. You know, so I think, if I take the perspective, is I want to make sure this is done right, so that it doesn't look like an engineered slope or it doesn't, you know, creates problems later on. And, you know, so some of the concerns I had is, I, you know, I don't see enough understorey trees, you know, in the mix, and I'd like to see a little bit more ground covers and less reliance on seed mixes in areas. And the reason for that is seed mixes are very difficult to get established. You know, and inherent in the given, the site location, one of the main concerns too is we're planting a huge volume of plant material, and there needs to be a provision for irrigation, you know, because I don't see it really being working without that. And a good example is, you know, the current landscaping at, you know, the Chapco Crossing site. You know, a lot of material has died because of the lack of, you know, watering and, you know, there are other issues with planting and that. But the big, the biggest factor was that a lot of the material that was, you know, recently planted just didn't get enough care, you know, to make sure that it gets over that hurdle and survives long-term.
And, and I think in, well, we've also heard now from Bob that the, uh, there's a preference for, you know, looping, you know, water through this area. Is that a cause for concern for you? Can it be done?
It's a concern for me, because it's creating another disturbance within the wetland. And I, I would just request if there's a way to maybe, you know, talk with Jerry and Bob, you know, could coordinate it is whether they could modify the loop to minimize to the basic extent, you know, the amount of wetland disturbance.
Of course, it will supply irrigation.
Well, we, we actually also...
That's a good point, that's a good point.
If I may, we, we also disagree with the, respectfully disagree with the, uh, with Mr. Marshall. Uh, he's calling for a connection between Chapco Crossing and Cotten Lane, which does not serve Chapco Crossing in any way. We are fully looped without, throughout the parcel more than one time. So to extend another line from basically where that driveway comes up, across the meadow down to Cotten Lane, serves no benefit to Chapco Crossing. Potentially could serve a benefit to Cotten Lane, I suppose, although it only goes a portion of the way down Cotten Lane. So I don't know that it's both because of its additional impact and because of its cost without relationship to the system on site, we don't think it's appropriate.
Well, I would recommend that at the very least you do a conceptual plan and try to minimize, like Stephen said, the amount of crossing towards the buffer, whatever area that may be. Submit a concept plan, PDF it to me, I'll send it to Jerry, we'll set up a meeting and discuss it and see where that goes.
Well, the, the plan is not that dissimilar from what he showed. It's just, I mean, the buffer goes all the way across in front of Cotten Lane. So whether it's a little bit wider, a little bit narrower, it's still going to cross the, the wetland area. But we're, we're happy to meet with him, but, but just for the planning board benefit, we don't...
I certainly understand that. I mean, it's, on one hand, the town would like to have more protection, and on the other hand, what's a fair question? Or a fair approach to it, to, you know, not unburden the applicant or anybody in a extraordinary way.
I'd be more than happy to sit with someone from your staff, Andy, and we'll discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah, a few other, I think, significant features is, you know, there should be either temporary slash permanent fencing installed, because they're going to be required to monitor and maintain for a ten-year period. And, you know, it's, and to their advantage to do that, you know, prevent the browsing from, you know, deer. One thing that I didn't see in the environmental analysis, and I would like to see added, is just the, you know, potential impact of lighting on resident wildlife, you know, from, you know, the proposed development. You know, because that's, that was one of the concerns with Chapco Crossing previously, but I would like to see it, you know, addressed in, in this phase of the project. You know, other things too, like, you know, trunk protection for the trees to, you know, minimize the damage and the fall from deer and rabbits. And then, you know, one of the concerns too is that with the phasing, it looks like they're going to start stockpiling in phase three, but the planting won't, won't be done until phase six. And there's always a concern about, you know, you're, you're introducing the soil, it's exposing it to invasive seed stock, it's, you know, wind dispersal, everything, and, and then just the long-term stability of it. So one of my concerns is, I would like to see a, you know, more detailed discussion on whether they could either avoid using, you know, the modified berm area as a soil stockpile until they're ready to do the grading and do the planting all at once. Or if they're going to put it there, then we need to see a pretty detailed, you know, erosion and sediment control measure that uses blankets and, and other protecting mechanisms. And they had some of those, that information in there, but it, it's just not clear on when the steps occur. You know, and a good example too is when they're going to do the removal of the existing trees and the removal of the stumps. How is that area going to be stabilized? And if it's going to sit for, you know, a long period, it needs to be seeded with something that's going to compete, you know, outcompete some of the, you know, invasive stock that's in that area. And, you know, with the, with the plan, because so much effort has gone into creating the contours to make it look more naturalized, it also requests that an as-built plan on the grades be, you know, stopped in the process before planting is done, so that we can make sure we're getting, you know, the, the look and the feel that, you know, a lot of effort went into to, you know, create that. Because like you get a, just an excavator out there and, you know, maybe doing his, you know, I mean, it's not going to necessarily end up with what a lot of effort went into to create.
And there's some differences in, I think, in figure one and figure two. And figure two has actually got a mound that's kind of made, to make it more naturalistic. It doesn't just come straight down, you've got a little mound in there, which I thought was an interesting feature.
Yeah.
It might look a bit more naturalized than just a straight slope.
A lot of the shaping also, will also take place in the field. Uh, it's, you know, there are always field conditions that you can adapt to, and you can step back and look at it and, and smooth it out. So that's, this is to represent the idea of blending different levels of different gradients of slope with balancing with maintaining the existing vegetation in the lower meadow.
Now, what, what, what are we doing in terms of the stabilization of these slopes on the manufactured, you know, some of this is going to be fairly deep soils, so what are we doing on that? How's that being stabilized?
What would you generally do most of the time? Just put an erosion control fabric or some sort of jute matting down on the slope areas?
It's just on the top, I mean, I'm talking about underneath. I mean, we don't often see, but our, our steep slopes law actually talks about subsidence, substance.
Subsidance.
Subsidance, thank you. Yeah. We, we pronounce it differently, appear, sorry. It's my northern Westchester accent, sorry.
The way the steep slopes law is set up, it has a maximum slope. Usually, it's based on the angle of repose, and what that means is when you dump soil on itself, it has its own way it slopes out. That's called the angle of repose. That's the slope it's going to naturally have when you just place it. So that's usually something that means itself unstable, socially. If you're going to go increasing it more than a two-on-one, you can either put more material on the outside or you can build it the same way you build a wall. You actually have to have horizontal layers spaced so many feet vertically in the soils itself to hold it in place.
Okay.
So that's something a geotech guy would have to tell you, that would be based on the types of soils they used. That's generally used if it is very steep and you have a steep soil below you where you don't have, where you cannot bench it. So generally speaking, the steep slopes law again states the maximum slope is two-on-one based on the angle repose, and that's the maximum slope for most soils.
It looks to me, by these grades, that angle of repose is really not going to be a problem.
That is correct.
But I think, Bob, unless I'm mistaken, I think Bob's talking about something else. Not the angle of repose, but the stability of the, of the subsoil.
Because of the depth.
And are you going to have subsidence or compaction?
Well, that's where I put in my previous memo where you have a lot of loading on top of material that you don't know what it is or you do know what it is, and it's not that great. You have to do a global stability analysis, which takes into account the shear strength and the strength of the underlying soils. So depending on how they do this, you may have to do a global stability analysis, which would tell you if the underlying soils would be able to withstand the loading of the topsoil.
Right.
So it's a whole very complex stability mechanism that needs to be done.
Is, is it also a sequencing, because, a sequencing question? Because sometimes, unless I'm mistaken, you want to preload the soil, let it compact, come back and load some more and load some more, so that eventually, by the time you get to your, your finished grading, everything is finally compacted and stable.
And what you can do sometimes, we did, when we did a subdivision on surf lane, it was putting material on a steep slope. What you do that is you bench it, so the loading goes directly down vertically, as opposed to going along the plane. It doesn't slip along the plane. I mean, it gets pretty complex, but that's generally what you can do. Simplify it, they can do, they can bench it and put the material on top of that, so all the verticals loading and surge charge goes directly down vertically into the soil, assuming the soils are strong enough they can unload. But it's a lot of testing they would have to do, and we can require a geotech to do that to make certain when this is all said and done, it's going to work out well, and it should be overseen by a geotech as well.
There's also, I'm sorry.
Okay.
There's also specifications for laying down soil. You know, under a pavement, you want a fairly dense compaction. Under a meadow condition, you don't want as dense, but you want it to be compact enough so it stays.
Right.
Um, and it's put down in, in layers, so there is a specification for that, and it's inspected during, during, um, construction activity, so...
So there's, there's the science of this, which is what we're talking about, but then there will be back to the, back to the art of this, so...
It takes a very unique excavating.
Yeah, it's, it's shaping, shaping the land form.
Not, not many guys who run this kind of equipment are necessarily sensitized to, I think, what we're looking for. And you said something about an as-built grading plan that would be filed.
One of the ways to try to make sure that it follows the design would be to have an as-built of the contours, you know, so that you could kind of match it up, you know, as close as feasible.
Is this reasonable? Okay, good.
And that's the same thing we do with the basins, because as you know, when you're on the field, it's very difficult to tell whether in fact it's by plan, but you do need something, so Steve will have to look at when it's done, to make sure the grades are somewhat close to what was proposed. Obviously, that's the reason for the as-built top.
Okay, good.
And I just had some other comments on other aspects, so, you know, like the loop road. You know, they have a fairly decent landscape plan, but I would suggest to have them also look at adding some shrubs and ground covers to promote a little bit more visual interest and diversity as well. And, you know, the stormwater basins, you know, my comments are more technical, and, you know, again, the main concern is keep having soil be there for long periods of time, and so making sure that they have a nurse crop of, you know, an aggressive grass that'll, you know, provide cover until the perennials and other material can get established.
I guess you could have a, another preload of six inches of soil that you're going to take away, and anything that started to get there, you just rip it up and take it away in the last trucks leaving the site. But, you know, overall, I think your, your plan is excellent. I liked it very much. It was easy to read, and I could even understand, you know, a lot of the concepts.
And then with the retaining laws, I mean, we've had this discussion before about the engineered wall and the look of it, and I, my recommendation, I'd still... And I, my recommendation, I'd still like to see a natural stone veneer, you know, to, you know, keep it in, you know, practice of what you see throughout Westchester. You know, a good example is if you drive on Western Avenue, you know, with the toll site there with the engineered wall, that no matter what kind of plantings you do, it just doesn't look like it belongs.
Yep. I thought we heard last time that, maybe it was just a rumor, that that was going to be what we were going to see. It was going to be a cut stone.
That's what I think.
That's the intent.
That's the intent, or that?
That's what we're going to do.
Okay, so. Okay.
Good.
And with the tree replacements, they've, you know, done a very good job of, you know, meeting the criteria for, you know, replacing trees. The one concern I have is they didn't really take advantage of the shrub provision. You know, they only are using four trees, and so that represents thirty-two shrubs. And my suggestion would be to improve the diversity of the site, is use more of the trees and take advantage of that shrub provision to promote a better overall diverse site, you know, plant material. And then the tree protection plan, you know, is, you know, it's a work in progress, but they just wanted to make sure that they, you know, follow proper guidelines with the drip lines and, you know, tree protection during construction. And then with the overall tree removals, you know, they're removing now two-hundred-and-eighty-eight trees. So the number has varied over, you know, the last few years. But I mean, you know, I think they've got it down to where, you know, that seems to be a reasonable number based on, you know, the current plans.
Okay. Are the tree protections that you see in here, are they, in fact, realistic? Sometimes you see these things on drawings, and a tree is dead in a year.
Yeah, I think I'm always a fan of making sure it's field-checked, you know, and to make sure that, you know, equipment and operators and that don't, you know, encroach within these areas. So, you know, the specifications that they have of using fencing and, you know, a more durable material makes a lot of sense. And, you know, they did a fairly good job with, you know, prior, you know, development on protecting existing trees.
Okay. All right, good. Well, why don't we get into the issues that have been raised and the way it's been done? So maybe we can take care of a couple of easier ones first and have some conversation on some of the other issues. It seems to me that we talked in terms of demolition of the gatehouse a while ago, and I didn't think there was much in the way of objection to it once the applicant came.
The guesthouse.
The gatehouse, what did I say?
Oh, the guesthouse. You said the gatehouse.
I think you had, someone else had said gatehouse.
It's been listed as gate and guest.
Okay. It's the former Reader's Digest guesthouse, which is near the gate.
Is that a historic?
The gatehouse is actually gone. That was there.
The gatehouse is gone.
The question is, are there any guests in it?
Well, we hope not, at this point.
Maybe little critters.
So it really is the guesthouse, not the gatehouse?
It is the guesthouse.
Okay.
The former guesthouse, yes.
Right. So were there any concerns with that? I think we'd heard from the applicant about this. We saw the studies early on. Is that an issue, a problem?
Not for me. Well, I'm just curious, is, how old is that building?
Parts of it are old. I don't know the exact date, but it's been modified two or three times over time. The building closest to the entry drive, that's an add-on, that's an add-on garage. I think you asked about that building. So it's lost whatever initial character and integrity that it had, so, I think. And it's now falling down, so it's even less. On the inside, it's.
Oh, so.
We saw those pictures. They says documentation.
Yep, early on.
Well, the only small suggestion I would have is that, you know, given that you probably can figure out what the oldest part of the house is, if the, there should be some effort to at least recycle part of it. Some of, you know, there's a, there is a good market for old timber that's in good condition. The price of it runs something like four to five times, you know, what you would get for a similar piece of new wood that has been properly cured. So if there's some, if there's really some really big beams that haven't been eaten by the, you know, by the, I don't know what kind of boring worms do it, but they do it. So if it's decent, I would request that, you know, maybe get the guy from Mount Gisco that sells antique woods. And it would have some value, and it would be recycled.
Well, we can certainly look and see if there's anything salvageable.
I mean, the newer parts, I don't care. Yeah, newer being, you know, less than a hundred years old.
I can't recall, did you offer to photo document any of the really old parts?
It has been photo documented already in the initial submission.
Okay, good.
Sometimes you find people put insulation in the older parts of houses, you know, like newspapers. And I have a friend that found Civil War newspapers when he was doing some renovations. And what was really neat, he found a saber that went on top of the, you know, on the front end of a Civil War rifle.
We have an increase, the applicant has been talking to us about basements and the, let's talk about basements and before we start talking about bedrooms. I don't think, well, let's talk about bedrooms, because I don't really think that's really our issue. But do we have a strong feeling one way or the other to make a recommendation to the town board? I think they'll look to us on that, but does anyone have a feeling, strong or unstrong toward it?
I have a medium strong. I would think that, you know, while we talked last time about saying, well, there shall be no bedrooms in the basement, I would go farther and say that, you know, that it should be in part of the deed that there will only be two bedrooms in a two-bedroom house and three bedrooms in a three-bedroom house. I find that there's things called lofts and dens and everything else. So, you know, the bedroom count and the bathroom count should be fixed. And so that if there's someone that has some special circumstance or something like that, they would have to come back to whoever the right governing board is, the town board or us. Because I think the building's very spacious, there's open areas, you know, that somebody could deck over and make more space. Now, I'm sure it wouldn't be at the behest of the Toll Brothers or anyone like that, but, you know, when people buy something, they feel like they can do anything they want with it.
Well, I think the applicant's offered restrictive covenants, right, in terms of the HOA, in terms of future development? But I was going, before we got to that, I was, sorry. I was talking about the increase that is planned right now over what was approved.
The nine bedrooms.
Exactly.
From twenty-three bedroom units to twenty-nine three-bedroom.
So is, we heard that's four schoolkids, right?
It's four schoolkids total.
Total. The nine bedrooms add four, or it's four?
No.
Four of the nine bedrooms?
Forty-three.
Right, it adds four.
It adds four.
It adds four. The total count prior to adding the four is forty-three.
So the net is about a ten percent four increase.
Yep.
With the number of bedrooms.
Yep.
So.
But do we have to think about it not just in terms of these nine bedrooms, but also in terms of the overage in bedrooms that were?
Good question, because it is interrelated.
In the two-hundred, in the Kupola Building.
Yeah.
So that you're looking, if you add these nine, you're what, at something like twenty bedrooms over the original count?
Yes, okay. Fair enough. But I think the town board will look at it that way, too.
Impacts on the density of the site, whether it has any impacts on traffic, and whether it has any impacts on the overall housing stock and?
Well, and also, the, I think the school district, you'd be wise to talk to the school district to see if they could accommodate the extra children, given their present circumstances. Which way is the population going? So that would be nice to have documentation.
They do. They submitted the documentation based on the analysis that the school district had done in their budget, which showed a decrease in enrollment between two thousand six, seven, and twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen of about ten percent, I want to say.
Big number.
Yeah.
And I think the applicant has done the environmental analysis in terms of what the bedroom count does in terms of all the things that were part of the finding statement.
Yeah.
So I think, less than, and screen and correct us if we're wrong, but I think basically it was considered to be very modest or non-existent.
Right, it was about the sewer capacity, sewer flows, things of that nature, and they're well within what was approved. And the, the.
I think we had something.
The error with the sixty-four units in the Kupola Building, that was an oversight error on behalf of the applicant and town staff, not picking up that change needed to be done at the time that the town board allowed that sixty-four units to be placed into that building. So that, everything since that point has been, can be accommodated on-site with sewage flows, with traffic, with all of that. It's just the number was not changed previously. What they're asking for in relation to the nine additional bedrooms is because of this application.
Right.
So the numbers that are in these materials for the sewage flow and for the water flow, is that inclusive of not only the nine additional bedrooms that are being requested, but also the? So, so are we, if you include the eleven extra bedrooms in the Kupola Building, the nine extra bedrooms proposed for the East Village, where does that put you in terms of what the county has limited us to in flow from the site?
You guys did a spreadsheet on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're within that.
Yeah, they're within.
I reviewed that. They're below it.
Is that everything?
Everything.
They did a beautiful spreadsheet on that. I checked that. I did review that.
And I thought that our traffic consultant also looked at the traffic, right? The delta on the traffic as well for the nine bedrooms. And I think the finding was that it would not have an impact.
Right.
That would generate the need for further study or undoing what was done before and changing the findings.
Right.
Is that accurate?
Well, the town board will have to make additional findings.
Right.
And they'll have to make that finding that the total number of additional bedrooms that they approve will not generate any additional significant environmental impact.
If they approve it.
The necessary study to support that, if they can make that finding.
So Peter, the increase of three-sixty-three and the bedrooms, are they tied together or are they separate?
Of three-sixty?
You said the average unit goes up three-hundred-and-sixty-three feet. Is that tied to the bedrooms or are they separate?
No, it's tied to the bedrooms.
Okay, so the units are getting bigger because we're getting bigger. I'm just trying to.
It's all part and parcel. You know, that three-sixty-three is an average size of units. Some units have gone up a little less, some units have gone up a little more.
And that, we were told, is because the market is driving, we need units ten percent bigger.
Correct.
So that gets the units bigger. Now, is the bedrooms also market-driven?
There was issue of the additional, Andy, and you can probably speak to this better, but I believe the applicant had stated that the additional bedrooms came from the basements and the issue of lowering the units that were on that main entry roadway, bringing them down in grade. And they were looking for the first-floor master bedrooms in units. And so that's where the nine extra bedrooms came from.
I remember that. It was tied to grading.
Right, right. But the change in the unit size, the units that were shown in the two thousand fifteen PDCP were prototypical units drawn in two thousand thirteen. We now have a two thousand nineteen designer, builder, marketer in Toll, who with direct experience in the Westchester market, has proposed that these units are what the market is looking for and we think are, will be salable to the audience that we're all seeking to attract. So, again, it's the difference between a concept plan and now a final site plan. We now have, we're now six years further along. The market changes over that time, and also the product is now specific to the builder. So it's, yes, there is a net change, but it's not a net change because the living room has grew by two feet. It's an overall picture of, here's the units that we believe to be successful, the units that were designed six years ago, you know, or from a different project to show illustratively, if that's a word, how they would fit on the site. So it's further development from, I believe, from concept plan to full site plan.
That additional script footage is over multiple floors, so the footprint is not getting that big on.
Yes, and it varies. That's an average, so.
So, for me, the real thresholds are infrastructure-related on this subject. And it sounds as though, because we don't want sewers overflowing and traffic to be a problem, so on and so forth. So it sounds as though that we're well within the design capacity of our systems with these added bedrooms. The other, the other big one maybe, I don't think it's big for us, because I don't think that this is what we're supposed to be thinking about, I could be wrong, are the schools. And the school district, along with the town board, will weigh in on what the impact the schools are and whether that's acceptable or not. The rest of it, it seems to me that one of the reasons we do this kind of development, I think, and one of the reasons I think that we like this kind of development, it happens to be Toll Brothers in this particular case, is that we encourage density in the right places. And one of those places is a place where people can walk to shopping, where kids can walk to school. Kids are going to be, I don't know how many high school kids are going to be in this. Apparently, there may be none. I don't know, depending on what the demographic is. But I think that this is a good thing, having nine extra bedrooms. The impacts, I think, are going to be really de minimis. And we're going to have a more vibrant, can't call it a hamlet, but we'll have a more vibrant commercial center and a more vibrant neighborhood as a result of it. So I can't find any, myself, I can't find any objections that I would have from the planning board's perspective to nine more bedrooms.
Does anyone have any issues?
I think Dick made a very good point about not just having a limitation on the basements not being used for bedrooms, but also looking at some of the flexible space that exists in other parts to put a limit on the number of bedrooms. If it's a three-bedroom unit, it remains a three-bedroom unit. If it's a two-bedroom unit, it remains a two-bedroom unit.
Well, also, you mentioned bathrooms, which I thought was an interesting point, too.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. I agree with Tom.
Yep, I agree with Tom also, but I think with those caveats, I think it's fine. How about the other issue is basements. We've rolled around with this one for a while, for months.
Basements is a different issue for me.
Okay, well, we're probably going to be called upon to talk, it may not be our decision, but it's something I think the town board is going to look to us for a recommendation. So what are our thoughts on basements?
So I guess I'd just like a little clarification on this. I think the last time we talked about this, the justification was, and it's actually in your document, one of the justifications is extra storage space for people. We have two-car garages here, and the ninety-one of these spaces are actually not required by our code. They are being provided for the benefit of the tenants. One of the arguments is that people who have, don't have storage space will take their garage and use their garage for storage, and they will park their cars somewhere else, like out in the street or in the alley or so. So that's part of your rationale for, I'm guessing, because you said so, part of your rationale for basements, for basement space is for storage. But the basements are bigger than anybody would rationally need for storage. And so, I believe they are. Correct me if I'm wrong, but. So there are other uses. Could you then go ahead and explain what the other uses of the basements would be? Just so that we can, you know, put a pin in this.
Sure. Good evening, James. This is Patrick with Toll Brothers. Yeah, so our customers use basements for a whole host of reasons. We use them because they house all of our mechanicals, right? It takes what would be, you know, your furnace and your water heaters and your electrical panels and your water sewer connections, your sewer cleanouts, and you can get all that stuff now.
Can I interrupt you for a second there?
Sure.
But before you had introduced basements into these units, where were those utilities?
We never, from the start, we never thought these units to be without basements. You know, and I think going back, we actually reviewed our initial, you know, when we were in due diligence for the purchase and sale agreement with the property. That was one of the first, you know, that was on our list of items that we discussed with the building inspector, because back in, it was two thousand sixteen and seventeen, the state updated their code for egress. And there was still a little bit of a gray area on how, you know, what was required for egress at that point. So that wasn't just in our standard list of items that we reviewed at that point. We don't build anything in this part of the world without basements. The market just does not accept it.
So the other uses?
Sure. So, well, if you've been in any of our model homes, you know, we'll put some pretty elaborate recreation spaces down there, bars, you know, game rooms, movie theaters. Yeah, I mean, we've done stuff as far as, you know, in some of our single-family homes, just setting up like, you know, mock hockey rinks and sports fields. You name it, our customers use it. Basements are actually very popular with our true active adult customer, which is the fifty-five-plus in this area. And they use that for, you know, a whole host of things. And they use that for, you know, a whole host of things. They'll put, we're working shops down there, they'll put just big romper rooms for when their grandkids come, and it's downstairs where, you know, you go nuts downstairs. So, you know, it's a very flexible space, to the point where, in our home designs and definitely in this home design, we will open up the stairwell. When you walk in the home, the main staircase, the same way it's opened up to the second floor, it will be opened up down to the lower level as well, to really integrate it into how the homeowners use that space.
Thank you. Are there any impacts that are not mitigated by any of the design proposals that we can identify with the introduction of basements? That's a question to staff, yes or no?
No.
I think with the loop road change and now the berm, I think we've taken care of this, we always had this issue from the get-go with the basements, what are we going to do with the extra fill? So we have some solutions onsite, and as I understand it, it's now, it's still, it's in balance at this point, sixty-nine sixty-nine, right? So it's all going to be onsite, which is, seems to be...
That's pretty great, actually. And the loop, the loop road as a receiving area was just a brilliant request and a brilliant move. I think that that was your idea in the beginning, Bob, and I think it worked out real well.
So I think it's in balance, so I mean, that was a concern that we had initially, but I think anything else is, it doesn't impact storm order, Bob's done all the engineering for all that sort of thing. So again, from my standpoint, I don't have any concerns with basements. Again, going back to Dick's caveat, and that is that we put on, as along with the applicant, restrictive covenants and restrictions in terms of the actual design, in terms of what is really your bedroom, number of bedrooms, number of bathrooms, et cetera.
That doesn't preclude that if you're going to have a romper room, you can't have a sink, but no toilet. Because if you're going to have a bar, you need to, you know, put some stuff down there. So that would be one thing that I would be open to seeing how that works. But I think, I think you're right, I think we're on the right path here.
Okay. I don't, do we have any issue with, well, why don't we, I think we've hit the low-hanging fruit, why don't we start talking about, you know, some of the issues that are really interrelated? I mean, Sheila's really kind of led us in this area, so, you know, what are we really talking about with the sizes and the road widths and, you know, these driveways? You know, we've expressed, some of us have expressed concerns with these driveways. And we haven't seen any alternatives from the applicant, other than hearing that this is what the market is doing, this is what we need to see in terms of size. We suspect that the size of the units overall, the average size, is really driving the change in terms of the size of the driveways. From my perspective, I did a little bit of research and started to look really at some detail at the schematics. And when I start looking at these garages, which are earmarked for two cars, and most people who are going to be buying these are going to have two cars, if you look at these garages, and you'll notice in each one of these garages, there's a post in the middle. And I don't know what the dimensions of the sample car is, but I went through and I started looking at, looking up and seeing what dimensions of cars are these days. And of course, it goes from the behemoth, a Suburban, which is eighty-one inches, to in a Accord, that's seventy-three inches, and a CRV, which is also same body, seventy-three inches. So it ranges, if you look at the schematic, even as it's portrayed here, the cars must go out exactly straight, or the mirrors are going to clip the side of the wall. You can't get out of the car because there's a post there. And what I'm really driving at here is, I think, this, it goes back to the driveways, that's why I'm harping on this. If the garage is unrealistic in terms of someone driving in, trying to open the door and get out, but opening the door to get groceries out or take bags out, the bottom line is, I don't think it works. And in fact, I think you're going to see people wanting to do what is the natural thing is, is to park in the driveway, because it just doesn't fit. Look at these dimensions, you know, they're twenty feet across, I believe, and if you really look at the dimensions really carefully, these dimensions are drawn from the outside walls, not even the inside, so they're even shorter and wider than the dimensions would suggest. They simply are drawn as pictures, and I don't think they will work for the kind of, the kind of experience that we see here in Westchester. So therefore, I'm on my roll.
Let's let him go.
The issue is, the reason I mention this is, we've heard about how the sightlines are going to be terrific because there won't be cars in these driveways, we have parking along the sides of the street. Two issues from my standpoint, I think it's unrealistic, I think you're going to see cars parked in these short drives, whether they fit or don't fit. It is just natural for people to want to get into their house quickly with bundles or weather, et cetera. And if there's already a car in there, you're not going in there very quickly and you can't get out. So it's another issue. And then number two, even the off-site parking or onsite parking on the streets, I understand that we've asked for this kind of a traditional layout, but I'm not so sure the degree of street parking that we are really asking for is something that is really consistent with what we see in this town, what people like to do in this town, and the way we like to live. So there's two issues. I've joked about this a little bit with some people. To me, this is forest noise that's being imposed in Chappaqua, and it doesn't work. Number two, I think there's some real issues in terms of snow. We've asked last time, Sheila asked, I think, last time, to hear about where we see this realistically in the northeast in this kind of climate. We saw last time pictures of, you know, palm trees, et cetera, we're in California, Florida. We have snow here. Where's the snow going to go? And once it's there, we have very narrow streets, we have parking on these streets. I think then we now introduce an EMS fire situation, I think we then introduce sightline issues, and I just think there's some real concerns here. We've been talking about this for a while, and the applicant has not come back with any sort of alternatives for us to really look at in terms of either blend or something halfway. I think we've heard from Bob that technically, in terms of engineering, it can work. I think the issue for us is, is that good planning? And I'm not convinced at this point, based on what I've seen, that this is good planning.
Sure, I mean, I'll take them, you know, one at a time.
Sure.
So as far as the actual dimensions of the garages themselves, so this is not product or homes that we've built anyplace else, right? We had to build these from the ground up. These are not napkin sketch plans, these were actual dimensioned plans to make sure they could work. And they, you know, not only just could work, but they would service a luxury buyer. And because the site is laid out in the way it is, where you're locked in on the front, you're locked in on the back, you know, we really drilled down to dimensions to make sure that we had exactly the footprints that we needed to feel comfortable. What kind of complicates this site a little bit more than even a traditional townhouse project is these are all going to be three simple lots. So it's not like as you, it's not like maybe traditionally in a condo project had the flexibility to maybe ship, you know, if someone wanted to build a three-bedroom, twenty-nine-foot-wide plan on an interior footprint home, you don't have the flexibility to move that lot line, right? So you're now designing to something that you can accommodate what you feel is going to be the majority of your customer coming in, which is someone's going to be accepting of a two-bedroom home, which is absolutely going to be looking for predominantly a first-floor master bedroom home. So that, that was the driving force behind all of these footprints. As far as the post in the center of the garage, we clear, there are no posts in our garage. We clear span all of our garages, so...
What is the drawing?
There might be a four-drink.
Yeah, might be a drink.
Okay. But even so, I mean, even dimensionally, as it's drawn here schematically...
Yeah, so a typical townhouse, typical townhouse garage for us, we'll use a sixteen-foot-wide door, you know, their garage space is somewhere between nineteen and twenty by twenty, you know, it's almost a perfect square. On these footprints, we actually pushed the garage back a little bit deeper in order to accommodate stairs, because we knew we were going to have to deal with some drop-slab conditions on a number of the footprints and locations within the job. And we also wanted to make sure that we had places for our customers to store what is, if you don't handle it up front the right way, a massive nuisance, which are garbage pails. So you give customers a spot where they can store their garbage pails within the garage, and they're required to store their garbage pails within the garage.
So can I just make an observation? I don't want to interrupt, but it may be helpful. I'm looking at the dimensions, outside to outside, typical garage is twenty feet and change, twenty-six, twenty-eleven. It just, it looks to me like, maybe I'm wrong, but these cars look like they may be drawn out of scale.
They might, we can confirm that.
Because the impression that it's really tight might be that the cars are drawn out of scale, because a standard parking stall width is like nine feet?
Yeah.
In like a shopping center, where everybody comes and does their groceries, so on and so forth, gets in and out of their cars with, without too much trouble. And what you have here is twenty-six out to out, so that means you're nineteen-six, I guess you're nineteen-six inside?
Yeah, it's pretty close.
Yeah, so you're probably about a standard-sized parking space.
But actually, the dimension you really have to consider is maneuvering in through that doorway and making those, as Bob pointed out, you know, you've got to be a precision driver.
Which is actually, well, not to cut you off, so this is why we typically go with a sixteen-foot-wide door, because if you want with two eighteens, even with the foot in the middle, you're typically, it's tougher to maneuver in and out of that door because you're dealing with the center, center post that's bisecting those two doors.
Well, the sixteen-foot center, you have thirteen feet bumper-to-bumper, door-to-door of car space with a standard SUV, which we see a lot of SUVs up here, not the big giant ones, but, you know, Lexus or someone like this. These things are, these are seventy-six to seventy-nine inches wide. So this, and then you're talking about the refuses up here in the front, how are we going to get the refuse out around the sides here when you have so little space, except without backing the car out and getting it out that way?
Sure.
I just think dimensionally, you're very, very tight, based on realist, I don't know if these are drawn to scale, I didn't measure them, but I just know what the size is. If you have, if you have nineteen feet inside of space and you've got thirteen feet of cars just, you know, side to side, and you need some space to get out of the car doors on all sides, and, you know, we heard about you're going to use the garage partially for storage as well, well, you can't possibly use it for storage, and it's just too tight? And again, to Sheila's point, how are you getting in here, except if you are, you know, a Blue Angel coming in at one mile an hour? So it's very, very tight. And again, I'm not criticizing that. What I'm getting back to is I think this whole issue that we've heard about, that these driveways, don't worry about them, cars are not going to be in there, the sightlines are terrific, I think that's the impact, because realistically, people are going to live differently, and I think people need the driveways that we saw in the original plan.
So are we, are there two things, Bob? One is, and Sheila, I think that you brought this up in particular, the width of the garage door opening is tight, and maybe that could be made wider, but I think you were both suggesting that the garage itself should be wider?
That's one way.
It's one way of doing it.
Because...
I think, I think there's an issue because it is, I think it's relatively tight. Because of that, you know, we don't have this kind of concern if someone just is going to use this as a one-car garage and keep one car out.
I understand.
Which is probably not unrealistic if you had what we had originally as the original drives.
No, if, 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 if these are going to be two-car garages, they have to function as two-car garages. We're assuming that there are going to be two cars here. We can't ignore the fact that there are going to be two cars here.
And we're giving credit for that, and I understand all that, but, and I don't know how that all works, that really is really for the architects and designers, but my issue is because I think it's cramped, I think realistically, we have to make the observation, or we should make the observation, that it may not be used as we see on the two-piece, the two-dimensional piece of paper. We really are going to see people, and never mind, we haven't talked about people coming up, where you might have three cars in your family, you know, God forbid, right? You know, it's just not going to work, or it's going to be very strange.
So I guess I go back to the applicant, you guys do this for a living, and you invest at risk a lot of money to sell units, to build them and sell them. Is this a standard car garage, standard design for a two-car garage?
Yeah, like we, I can, I can take photos of other projects that we have in the area. Granted, most of the stuff that we build in the area has been front-loaded garages, but as far as a twenty-by-twenty, you know, outside footprint for a two-car garage, that's pretty much what we build.
So the customers use it as a two-car garage? I understand you build them, these dimensions, but when you go back later on, do people actually put two cars in it, or do they put one in and one in the driveway?
Yeah, sure, no one's looking to, you know, shovel snow off their car. I mean, everyone's pulling their cars into their garages, you know. I have, my house is a two-car garage house, it's a twenty-by-twenty garage, I got three kids, we have two SUVs, and we manage to, you know, park our two cars in there with hockey gear and lacrosse gear and everything else, and bikes and everything else, you could figure out that has to go into our garage, you keep it organized and you park.
My last three houses, we've never parked in the garage, we've used it to store, we've parked in the driveway.
Did you have a face?
Yeah, wet. Wet base bits.
Yes. Yeah, and so, I mean, our, and our view of the driveway lengths themselves is, you know, we view them as an apron to the garage, and, you know, they are at a length where there is no opportunity for you, it's clearly no opportunity for you to put a car there. The previous plan, you were dancing kind of in this middle ground, where there was some fifteen-foot-length stuff and there was some sixteen-foot-length stuff, and predominant, you know, that's where the predominant length of the, and to us, that just was a recipe for, even if you, even if you did restrict people from parking in that space, you know, there is arguably enough room that they could get eighty percent of their car into that space, so you would have stuff hanging out the back end.
So there's one, excuse me, there's one more factor, I think, was mentioned, is that, because the aprons to the garage are unusually short, is there a, is there a problem in the car being able to turn into the garage and come straight in? I think that was one of the things that Bob said, is that how do you get in here?
Yeah, sure.
Are the aprons too short?
So, I mean...
Because you've got to be able to get yourself lined up.
Yeah, we demonstrated that in the exhibits that we provided previously. You know, and the idea of having to cross over a lane of traffic when you're pulling in or pulling out, regardless of whether you're pulling into a garage or out of a garage, one way or the other, you're crossing over a lane of traffic, either pulling in or either backing out, right? I mean, I live on a typical twenty-foot-wide asphalt-curved road, when I'm backing out of my driveway onto the road, you know, you're looking both ways and you're using, you know, the entire width of asphalt that's at your disposal. That's just how people drive.
I think I agree with Bob, and I guess Sheila as well, that the conditions that we're proposing here are sort of stacking up with each other. Short aprons, no chance for anybody to park there, the feeling that these garages are maybe narrower than they ought to be. It seems like it's building into a problem that maybe we don't have to have, and maybe there are two different ways to deal with it. One is make the aprons longer, and there is a, there is a plan in here that shows what that would look like as an alternative. But maybe there's another one, I happen to think it's better not to have the aprons long enough for people to park there, because people will. And if they can't park there, they won't, but they need to be able to have a space to park the car, which is in a garage which is big enough. Is there, what would be the impact? Because the way these are paired up...
We can absolutely look at widening garages.
If you widen the garage?
Yeah, if you want to even propose a target, you know, for twenty-two feet, you know, whatever it is, we can absolutely investigate that.
What, before we go to that length, because that's extra development area potentially, unless you eliminate the deck, you know, for small things first, the, I have no problem with two cans of trash sitting over in the corner, and then under the steps, there's more space for storing some other things, like some small tools or whatever else. So I see that, but I do agree totally with Bob, that this, the way it's drawn, you have roughly two and a half feet on each side, and then one and a half to two feet in the middle. And so that's a problem now. It looks like you have drawn the ends of the garage to be two feet. It looks like you have drawn the ends of the garage to be two feet. Now, I have, I have, you know, tracks and everything to open the door, you know, with the button, you know, the garage door, and I have two garage doors with one thing in the middle. And it works, but I don't know, I'll go make the measurements and everything and see what it is, because I'm curious now. But I think this is too tight the way it's drawn. So is the, the original question, are the car sizes correct? And are the wing, you know, the end wings on the door right? I mean, this, given the outside wall being twenty feet eleven inches, you have two five-and-a-half inch walls roughly. You're going to have your twenty feet on the inside. And it looks like the little pieces you have are two feet each, which then that goes to a sixteen-foot garage door, as you said. So I believe what you laid out might be reasonable. I'd love to know whether the cars are off.
Okay. Look, we can provide a, we can provide a very detailed, typical garage layout and look to provide some additional flexibility in the width of those spaces to make sure that we can accommodate.
And to me, an extra foot.
It's huge, right?
In width.
Eight inches is huge, yeah, yeah.
Huge in the ability to get in and out of the car.
Don't disagree.
So I'd be willing to go one foot, but not two.
Something just to think about where you're trying to visualize it. Parking space is usually nine feet. So if you put two parking spaces next to each other, it's an eighteen-foot opening. When people are in a parking lot and they're driving down the drive aisle, they're swinging into that nine-foot space. The majority of the time, they don't swing into the other two spaces next to them because they're trying to get in. And the nine feet gives you ample room to open your car, your door. It does swing into the adjoining person sometimes. So maybe we're having a tough time wrestling with the sixteen-foot door.
Okay.
And maybe if the door is an eighteen-foot door, then you are presenting a nine-foot and a nine-foot slot, which I would think people should be able to get into. But getting the garbage pails out, that won't work.
Well, here's the thing about the nine-foot slot, but when, instead of having another parking space next to you, you've got a wall.
Exactly.
That's where the door can swing.
You can't steal the extra space from that car, which is probably six and a half feet wide.
That was my point with the door, right?
So I think that the garage may maybe need to be wider.
Well, I think it has to be eighteen to satisfy people's concerns. But I think once you get inside the garage, twenty-two, twenty-five.
And there's also the reality of, I think Tom had brought it up the last meeting, you know, the homes are not going to accommodate the need of every potential purchaser, right? If someone has a Suburban.
Right, right.
Two Suburbans, this may not be the garage for you.
Exactly.
But I think, again.
Seven and a half foot wide vehicle.
But I think you can have two cars here, reasonable cars that we see here all the time. That'll be thirteen feet. And all you have to do is do the arithmetic. So you have nineteen feet, nineteen and a half feet. Subtract thirteen, that gives you six feet over three spaces in between the two cars, walls, walls. It's two feet. That is not much to get out of your car, and especially if you're trying to get stuff out. It's just, it's just too tight. So again, it's not, I don't really care about the design. What I'm going back to is, again, I don't think that the short apron is realistic with garages of this size. If the answer is to make these larger and wider to realistically accommodate cars, I could be persuaded to listen more about the apron. But right now, I look at the apron as a, kind of like a false hope. And I think it's going to cause all kinds of sightline issues because a car's going to be sitting out there in these ten-foot, eight-foot aprons sticking out. And you want to talk about blocking sightlines, this will be way worse than what we had before.
Yeah, we have to be sure the.
Yeah, I don't agree with the cars sitting in the apron because I know how we police, and our associations and management companies police our neighborhoods. But I do, I do hear you about the flexibility of the space, and that's something that will, that's a riddle I think we can solve.
I predict everybody's going to go home tonight and measure their garage.
That's exactly what I'm going to do.
I want to touch on another issue that we've talked about with the length of the driveways, and I want to come back to again. You know, I know you've made the point, Tom, that not every home appeals to every buyer. And I think we've made the point that this is a traditional neighborhood design, and that has some mimicry of an urban setting. But I think we have to face the fact that it is only a mimicry of an urban setting, and that we are really in a suburban setting. And that buyers in our area, especially the luxury buyer, which is the target audience, and the empty nester and the age-in-place buyer, might have an expectation that a full-length driveway is not a luxury, but it's, it is a necessity of how you, how you live, how you run in and out of your house, how you have people come and visit you. I'm not convinced that a short driveway is a benefit to the empty nester, luxury suburban buyer.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of unlimited space to plan this community. I mean, we are working with the space that we have to work with. And if, my very strong opinion is, is if a buyer is looking for a home, if there is an area that they're going to be, you know, potentially willing to compromise on, it may be trading in, you know, a full-size SUV for an A4, rather than, you know, compromising on what are very important living spaces on that first floor, be it their kitchen or their master suite, you know, those types of things.
That sounds like a risk that's on your side.
Correct.
Bob, based on the discussion tonight, in addition to seeing the expanded garage, do you want to see an alternative on the driveway, on the aprons? Just speaking for myself as five members. I would, and I think we've been, you know, sort of talking about that. I guess what we should do is perhaps be a little bit more firm and say, yeah, let's see, let's see the alternative. Let's see what that looks like. What is it? What happens? Yeah, again, we've, again, in our defense, we've been talking about it for, you know, six months or more. And apparently, the applicant has picked up on it in terms of, other than saying this is what we want for marketing, this is what we have to have, and of course, Sabrina's memo is also talking about, let's hear more about the marketing, to give us support. After all, either this is going to be something that we're going to have to decide as the planning board, or something that we're going to have to recommend to the town board. And I can give you a pretty high assurance that if we don't have something that we're strongly recommending, the town board is, may not be inclined to move forward.
Among the issues, this is clearly a planning board issue.
This is planning.
Yeah, this is planning.
So I guess, you can, I'll just finish going.
I was just going to point out that there is an exhibit here. It's not for the full site, but it shows what would happen in a portion of the site. So if you expanded the, I'm sorry, let me, if you expanded the driveways, and at least for the portion that's shown here, the consequences would be, it looks like the townhomes would be closer to the main road that goes into the main street that goes to the Cooperla Building, which I don't think would be a bad thing, just from a town planning point of view. And it looks as though, otherwise, there's very little impact, at least within this area of the site. You could still fit all the units in this area.
Sure, but if you look at the spacing between the units, that you're really, you know, the spacing between the units, and I don't know if this exercise, especially when you start going down the spine road, and start looking at the distance from the front door of the home.
Oh, I see what you did.
Yeah.
You squeezed the walkway between the homes.
Yes, these are all examples of what we have to.
Is it this one? Yeah. So you squeezed the walkway?
Andy.
Well, we can't do that.
No.
Oh, there it is.
We're not even sure whether, you know, you're talking about changing grade from front.
So this really isn't a real proposal, because you'd never build this.
This is, this is an illustration of what you would have to do within the framework of the roadway and the site to extend the driveways in various locations.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that you'd have to do it this way. I mean, that's all. I mean, you squeeze these units together on that walkway.
Tom, use your pointer and point out a.
Oh, yeah. Well, there it is. Thank you. You squeeze these here, but do you not have room here to move, to move this way and keep that distance?
Well, we're trying to move away from the auditorium boundary. This is a balancing of all these different considerations.
Right. It's not easy. I understand.
And you can see down here, it backs up, extend on the sidewalk along the main road.
It's this way, along here. It moves back from the road this way.
No.
There's plenty of room to do that.
Well, we didn't want to move Road E further into the meadow because that increases the grading.
You took forty-one and forty-two and moved up to N.
If you, if you use all of those controls that are already in place in the design, which actually are fungible in discussions with us. But if you decide you're going to hold those fixed, then you're right, you can't do it. So that's not very helpful, because maybe we would say, okay, you go ahead and move that road ten feet or whatever it might be. And maybe this unit, these two units can go to the other end of the development. Now, I know that's a consequence to other things that you care about, but this is really not very helpful.
Yeah, I won't speak for Andy, but we did not know that that level of flexibility was, you know, was on the table.
He offered, right?
Yeah.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
Yeah, and what's, what is, the way we started with this, designing this project from our end is the floor plans for the homes that we're selling have to work, right? So we start from almost like the center of the home and start radiating outward. And then figure out where you have room to manipulate and push and pull while still maintaining those core designs, principles that we need to sell homes.
Well, does this, I was confused by the sketch when I did look at it, and maybe I'm just not getting it. But, and I wasn't quite sure what it was showing to me, between the blue and light blue and the gray. But as a consequence of this, these changes, which are just, you know, drawn up here as a possibility, does it change any of your performance, your actual layout, your internal structure inside? Floor plans at all?
Well, this doesn't work, though.
No, we made, so for this exercise, we held our footprints and.
Just slid them.
Yeah, moved around.
We essentially believe that extending the driveway impinges on the public space, publicly available space on all sides of the buildings, to the detriment of the overall community. So that, and to speak to an earlier point that you made, which is that, you know, people don't, coming from a single-family home, don't live like this. This isn't the way they park. I agree with that. And I think that that's part of the balancing that a person would do. The people in their single-family home also can't walk across the street to Lifetime Fitness or Whole Foods.
Right.
Or, you know, community open space or an office building to visit their neighbors. So in making the choice to come here, they hopefully will recognize the value of the TND design. And it's a little tighter than you're used to living. And you might have to walk, you can't park in front of your house anymore. Your visitor can't park in front of your house. They have to walk down to a shared, common parking area. But there are benefits to live here. And we've tried to, you know, to match those with the area while trying to maintain our coverage and our disturbance. So it's, it's the whole picture. And what this illustrates, I think, to me, to sacrifice those common areas for the sake of driveways, which, yes, we like to park in the driveways, but if they say you can't park in the driveways, and we design them short enough that if you parked in them, you really stick out. You feel like, hopefully, you feel like a jerk, and you don't do it. Then, then you learn, you know, this is what you do.
Does that work elsewhere?
What's that? You know, you live in a townhome community, you adhere to the homeowners' association rules, or you don't, you don't live there, or shouldn't live there. So.
So, but, and just to, just to cycle back, the key is therefore be sure you give space in a garage, which actually.
Yes, yeah, I think that's it.
Is that that we wanted to shy away from the aprons?
From what?
We wanted to shy away from the long.
Use your microphone.
I thought we wanted to shy away from the long driveways because we didn't want all the clutter of cars parked at the rear end of the units. Wasn't that kind of the way we were going?
That was one of the theories. And I'm not so sure that there was buy-in with all of us on that issue from the outset. And certainly is, what Andy is saying is absolutely true. I mean, I understand that. I get it. I'm not so sure on balance, I agree, but perhaps the larger driveway, garage will help that. take care of my concerns in terms of what I think will happen, notwithstanding HOA rules, notwithstanding management policing, et cetera. If you can't fit in your garage, you're going to leave your car out in your driveway.
Or park on the street.
If it's close by.
Yeah.
If it's raining, and you need to get in your house, and the other car's in there, and, you know, it's, you know, your teenage son has parked it in the middle, or incorrectly, you know, and you don't have the exact amount to get in there. It's not going to work.
I'm just, I, I'm sorry, I just have a problem with this notion that because we are in a suburban environment, that everybody who lives here is going to, or wants to live here, or moves here, is already living here and is going to move into this particular development. Everybody has a fixed set of rules of how they're going to behave. And that's just how they come, and that's the end of it. I just don't buy that. I mean, people move, people get apartments in the city. They get pied-à-terres, they move into the city, and they, they do it for a reason. Because being in the city, with all of the, with all of the, all of the inconveniences of living in the city, there are the benefits of living in the city. You can't have a car in the city. So I, it seems to me that people are actually, if they buy into something like this, they're probably coming from a single-family home on, if it's this town, two acres, a two-acre lot, which has lots of land around it and landscape around it. And moving into a row house, that in itself is a, is a change in lifestyle, which has a lot of impacts associated with it. Your neighbors are on the other side of a party wall. Their front door is right near your front door. And I think that that's just one of the, the aspects of living in a greater density that people buy into, and they change their habits in order to do that. So I'm guessing that, I mean, you guys are in the business of understanding the market and understanding this, and I, it seems to me that people are going to behave the way you expected them to behave, or they wouldn't be living here.
Well, one of the issues that we did ask, and I think Sheila actually specifically asked for it, was to get references in this area for construction sites like this that Toll has built with these, this length of apron. So we asked for that. We saw pictures, you know, palm trees, et cetera. I don't think it's so much behavior. I really think it's climate here. So when you're sitting here in the winter, and your nearest parking spot is on the street, and it's two hundred feet away, I think it's unrealistic to expect that there's going to be compliance with that all the time. So I think it's, you know, I don't know if they've done that yet. We asked for it, Sheila asked for it specifically. I haven't seen it yet. But one of the things was, where have you done this before? We've looked at Pleasantville. We know what's down there. It's a different product, different market. But there, the drives are much longer.
Yeah, we can provide some examples. You know, East Coast, I'm aware of projects in Pennsylvania, Northern Virginia, a little bit warmer than here. But we can provide examples.
I mean, the row house in Baltimore, Philadelphia, and Boston, and the people live there, right?
Yes.
And they get out of their car in the rain to get to the front door.
Well, I, I think that you have an opportunity. I'm talking to our son, he says a lot of his friends are moving out of New York City because it's becoming too much of a mess. And so I think in the short term, at least over the next three or four years, there's going to be an exodus, not a great one perhaps, but, you know, some. And some people will come here and say, this is great. I don't have to fight for good schools in New York City. I can come right here, walk across the street for high school, which is the most important one. So I think it's, to everything that everybody has said, that I think there will be people who come here that are reasonably able to adapt, as opposed to people who already live here, who are going to probably unreasonably adapt.
So I share.
I don't agree. That's okay. We just disagree.
So I share the sentiment about, you know, certain demographics migrating out of urban to more kind of in-between lifestyles. And usually, what the key driver of that is, they start having families, right? They, their one, you know, studio apartment, one-bedroom apartment works for them, you know, up to a certain family size, or kids that reach a certain age. So, you know, to Tom's statement earlier about there being, you know, his opinion that, you know, additional bedrooms and density and, you know, potentially families adds a certain vibrancy to the community, you know, we share in that. But, you know, we also have to balance that versus what was originally approved. And it feels like the board is kind of, you know, on one hand, saying that they don't. And it feels like the board is kind of, you know, on one hand saying that they don't have any adverse opinion to additional bedrooms being added to the project, but then on the other hand, that they're looking for more safeguards to be put in place to make sure that no additional bedrooms are potentially added, you know, after we exit the community. So, I guess, just trying to look for more of like a universal, if there is one, opinion of the board on, you know, not only is the market very different from where it was in 2013 and 14, it seems like the school district's population is much different than it was in 2013 and 14. We weren't privy to the past, you know, X number of years prior to our involvement of the discussions of, you know, what was the genesis and what was the motivating factor beyond, you know, the bedroom limitations? And if the board is, would be more supportive or just, you know, maybe ambivalent to there being additional bedrooms, rather than there being this kind of two-thirds, one-third split, as we're now skewing it more towards the two-bedroom product, you know, maybe it's a 50/50, you know, maybe it's a flip-flop of the, of the, of the split. You know, we haven't really had this discussion, but a lot of what we're talking about as far as the product and the footprints, I mean, it's all driving these site plan issues. So, we're just looking to understand what sort of, you know, flexibility that there is, or what kind of type of flexibility the board-
Well, I think we articulated actually in terms of the nine extra, we're okay, but if you were going to come back to us and say there's going to be more than nine, I caution you not to go there because it's just going to open up a whole new Pandora's Box in terms of studies and impacts. You don't want to do that.
Let's go back to the question I asked a couple of minutes ago, does the board want to see alternatives on the driveways? There is definitely a difference of opinion among the board on this issue. And does the entire board want to support a request to see reasonable, feasible alternatives, or proof that reasonable alternatives are not feasible for various reasons to further this discussion and allow the board to hopefully develop a consensus on this issue? I think would be useful.
Well, that's what was asked of us, you know, already, right? I mean, that as far as understanding what the, you know, flexibility there is in the garages and-
Yeah, but the garages weren't the be-all and the end-all.
Right.
That was just, that was step one, this goes beyond that. I'm trying to see if, make the board's message clear, one way or the other, as to what they want you to look at.
Yeah, I've spoken a lot, I mean, others should speak to it, but I personally would, would support that.
I guess our, our statement was, you know, we, we knew what the plans looked like that were attached to the PD, you know, the 2014 PDCP, they just don't work. Like, there's no, you, there may be a market for it, but it's certainly at a significantly reduced, you know, price from the product that we're looking to build. And as far as like, you know, even in market absorption, like, you know, the sheer number of people that would be willing to accept-
So, the declaration you're making, I guess you're making, maybe I'm, maybe I'm reading into it, but you're saying there's no way to modify this site plan and get enough room and get the number of units and that you, that you want, the 91 units, and be able to expand the driveways, the aprons? It cannot be done.
On the, on the first-floor master bedroom units, that is a very, you know, I don't see how it's possible. Seeing how much we had to really, because they are alley-loaded and the design complications that that just are inherent in that, and the amount of effort it took us just to get comfortable with the footprints that we have now.
The site isn't big enough just to expand everything, because it's a very big site.
I don't know the answer, yeah, I mean, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, there's another issue as well, I mean, what Tom just asked, and it seems like the answer is like, well, the one-bedrooms don't work, okay. To Bless's point, what is, what can work and where? Does it work with the three-bedrooms?
That's, I guess that's kind of where I was, we came back and said, look, we've identified another, probably 10 to 15 homes where, yeah, we, we can incorporate, you know, these plans and these footprints on these homes, and it gets us on these homes some additional, you know, breathing room, you know.
And, and I would suggest that when you look at those, wherever they might be located, I would suggest that you look at those more carefully, for example, on the northern end, where the parking is a little bit more attenuated for those units, perhaps we accommodate those with the longer drives, which are, so like a little different sub-area, okay? And perhaps that works. Again, I, everything that Tom said and everyone else has said, look, that's what this whole application's all about, that's what we're supporting. But at the same token, while it may meet minimum engineering, you know, standards, we're also charged with what we feel collectively, individually, as a board, is good planning. And I think there's enough concern here that if we could see something from you that shows us realistically parking inside the garages, perhaps a blend of some that are longer, some that are shorter, where you come back and say, look, I really looked at this, we really can't destroy the one, the ground-floor bedrooms that we really need for the empty nesters, you know, come back to us and make that argument and show us. I, I think, you know, we, we could be persuaded to, to reach unanimity on these issues, which is what I think you really need to get this thing through and done and built, and off you go.
Well, I'm not, yes, we, perhaps we could be persuaded, I'm not, I'm actually not asking for the study because I think that the principles around which it's, with the exception that the garages need to be bigger, but we're talking about the depth of the driveways, I think the principles around which this is, has been designed are perfectly reasonable and will be successful. And I don't, I wouldn't ask you to, to make that extra effort, but that'll show you just how two unreasonable people can disagree. All the time here.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you do the study and you can prove out you have longer driveways, people are going to park in them.
Yeah.
If you don't want people to park in them, then don't do the study. So, it's kind of, it's almost like we're giving ourselves, we're giving ourselves another problem. But I do appreciate that Sheila thinks, Sheila and I don't see eye to eye on this one, and that's totally cool.
I actually wanted to follow up about this. I've never, well, obviously I don't live in a, in a development like this, but is it typical? Because I do know people who live in developments like this, and they have driveways, and you park in the driveway, and it's not seen as a negative. I didn't know, is it typical that you have HOA rules that prohibit people from parking in their driveways?
No, but our typical driveway length on our townhome could be 22, 25 feet, and you got to remember, they're not, they're not off of common alleyways, they are, you know, front entry off the main road.
Right, but I, maybe, I think that maybe Sheila's asking, forget about whether it fits or not.
Yeah.
Do you have these restrictions for aesthetic purposes?
Not to that degree, but yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that certain vehicles can't be parked in front of-
Like a boat?
Well, a commercial vehicle.
Yeah, even like vans or, you know-
Truck trucks.
Full-size truck, yeah, there's, and the associations kind of, you know, organically morph into whatever rules that they want to adopt. And if it, you know, if it turns out that there's a bunch of people abusing certain things, then usually the associations create some tougher good neighbor policies.
Well, my personal opinion is that this is beginning to, it's, it's a little bit atypical from what you do, and that atypical design in terms of length, prohibitions, is being driven by your perception that we have to have this extra 363 feet on average per, per, per a unit. And if that can't be moved, then we have to figure out some other ways to do it. And I'm not, I'm not convinced that we couldn't come back to say, look, we can do this, this, this on some of these units, and to the point that it has to be 363 feet more than, than it was before for this, for this, for this, to solve this problem. I, I think it's, you know, I think it's inflexible. And I think what I would offer to you, just for myself, is, you know, we'd love to be more flexible with you, and, and I think we've shown a great deal of flexibility, but at the same token, show us something that's realistic, that can work. You may, by doing this, to Greg's point, you may actually show, you know what, we were right all along, this is, this does not work. Not because we just threw something up here like this and it just moves around, but to Tom's point, you really, really, you know, tried to see it and tried to make it work. But, you know what, you convinced us based on market, based on this, that, whatever it might be, sightlines, planting, whatever it might be, you come back and say, see, it really doesn't work, and here's the, here are the problems. And I'm certainly speaking for myself, and I know all five members of this persuasion, we would be absolutely open to that conversation.
I, I hate to, I don't want to extend this any further than necessary, but I think it's important for me to, to say that even if you, if it turns out that we end up with longer aprons, I would still ask for the restriction that people aren't allowed, allowed to park on the aprons if they have to be in the garage. One of the reasons I like the shorter aprons is, first of all, makes for a tighter neighborhood. Secondly, there's no way for people to park on the aprons and in the alleyways, and it clears up what otherwise would be an unsightly condition, it's just a nicer neighborhood not having those cars everywhere.
We, we share that, right, that opinion.
That's my reason for wanting the shorter.
We'll put in the work.
Okay.
And some examples of where you do have the shorter aprons in the northeast corner.
And prohibitions.
And prohibitions.
And prohibitions. Well, you have the shorter aprons and you-
He could listen from there.
Yeah.
I'm betwixt and between Tom and, and Bob, you know, I like some of the things that Bob said, that, well, gee, some of the more problematic homes could either be moved up into the north, maybe those are all the, the ones that have a problem with the apron anyway, the bigger problem. And so, that might be the, you know, the two-bedroom, ones with the master bedroom on the first floor. It may be that there's a difference where a house is on a corner relative to sightlines, or where there are turning Ts, there's a difference that on the sightlines, and there's more, more safety involved if they do A versus B. So, I'm looking for perhaps the existing one that you have that you prefer, and then something that is not a whole-scale change, but a partial change that makes things perhaps more flexible, at least in part of the area.
Okay.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
If I may, sorry, Andy, excuse me. I wanted to say thanks because you guys have, gave us a lot of guidance. We've been kind of floundering around for quite a long time, and there was a lot of exchange of information, and I think we know kind of what we needed to come back with. And we've narrowed the field of issues to a place that I think we can hopefully get to the finish line. So, I did, so thank you for that, because it's been a long and winding road, as it usually is in all processes involving myself in this project, whose name I've long since forgotten. I just wanted to add one thing, there is a, because we, you guys are the planners, there's a phenomenon that we're seeing in the development business, which is what I'm calling the urbanism of suburbia. And, and Tom, you started, it was about a half an hour ago, I was going to jump up, but I was getting old. It, it's kind of happening. And we're doing this huge project in Danbury, where we're taking the Union Carbide Headquarters, which is in, in the middle of a real suburban area, coincidentally surrounded by 2,800 homes that our friends over here at Toll have built, who, which they're, they're doing extremely well with. But we're in the process of capitalizing a multifamily deal in the conversion of this building, and what our capital partners and our capital providers are telling us is this, this rush of capital to the urbanism of suburbia, where you have an urban experience in a suburban environment. So, walking, access to services, the non-dependence on the car, all this stuff that we beat our heads against the wall on over the many years to make work at this project, and we're now seeing it at Chapel Court Crossing because our demand for office space is increasing, and these people are coming in there because of the services. It's, it's working. So, Sheila, yeah, I live in a big house, we used almost the wrong word, with lots of land and a lot, a lot of driveway, that's how I choose to live. But I happen to live in an area of Grayfield Hill and Firfield where nobody wants to buy, because nobody wants to live that way anymore. They want to live in these more maintenance-free environments. So, there is a change going on in real estate, and you guys end up getting tasked with trying to address this stuff, but I'm seeing it in lots of spots. And these guys over here, I listen to them more than I talk to them, because they, they see it on a national basis, they are, they are more than a barometer. They, they really know what's going on, but thank you.
So, the term, the term that you're probably familiar with, that's been around a long time, is new urbanism, and there's a whole-
Right, yeah. Out of Yale, and the architect, Mr. Orr, and others.
Right, and it's, it's very sincere.
And it is, it's great.
Very successful, and let's not forget, we were the ones who led you to water on this particular site.
No, I know that, and that's why I'm going, I just want a drink. I want to, I want to take from the well. I'm going to make Godfather lines here, so you're going to be careful, draw from the well.
So, but, I'm sorry, I applaud that, that you're aware and that the, that the development community is, is turning to that, because I believe that's where the market is, is going, and I think that's, we're just trying to build all that we've already done at Chapel Crossing by getting this next piece right as well.
And one, one other thing that would be lovely, in my personal opinion, is that, you know, while I really enjoy the holiday season, I'd like to spend more with my family-
Yeah, how good would that-
My other big family here that I've come to know so well.
No, and I can bring my children next time, and they will endorse your statement, they'd like to see daddy again. But anyway, the feedback tonight was great, thank you. But did you retire, this is the other part that's got me freaked out. Bill Naskil retires, he still works. You retire, you still work. I want that deal, I want to retire and, and work.
Well, then, then you should think about having a, you know, a government job, because when they retire, they get to come back-
It's kind of a government job, nothing ever really happens, right? It's kind of governmental.
Join the planning board.
Yeah. Did that in Westport for three years.
But again, I think it's, it's important to look back tonight, I mean, we made progress in terms of, we're all set on the Loop Road, we're all set on the Gate House, we're all set, or Guest House, whatever it's called. And, and we've done some other issues, if you guys ever figure out what the lines are going to be on the auditorium, we can look forward on that.
Well, not us guys, that would be you guys.
Not us guys, not us.
No, waiting for you.
Oh, you know, on this one, I'm, I'm in this business.
The planning board's not the referee in this.
No, we're not. We didn't think we're just pilot on this.
So, anyway, but again, let's, why don't we schedule, well, we have a meeting in July 16, can we get these things here so that we can then, you know-
How about like, how about like June 26th? Like, what's the next Tuesday in June before we head into July?
Well, we don't, Tuesday, we go Wednesday, so it's-
Well, I don't, I'm lucky I remember what month I'm in.
We don't want to do it on June 2nd.
No, this is, that's a June 4th.
Or July 2nd.
Yeah, no, what's left in, is there anything left in June so we could come back in?
No, because we'd have, you'd have to get the stuff in, right?
I, I've got it in the car.
Then why didn't you bring it in?
I didn't know if you wanted it or not. Is there any more room in June?
No.
So, the main thing is to get, I think, get us to the next level so that we can really get this off to the town board.
You see these guys who've sat behind you all night?
Yeah, no, I know, just a little advice, don't ever follow us. Under any circumstance, pick another night.
Peg, we're going first.
I picked, I picked another night, but I was strong-armed into bringing them here.
Listen, listen, this is-
These positions are all for sale, these are naming opportunities.
When is the joint, what's your-
We have nothing on a joint.
Nothing.
Not, not the joints, the joint meeting.
We have not, there's no joint meeting scheduled, we were trying to get you to a joint meeting, which is why we were discussing these issues and trying to give you-
So, the soonest date you can offer me to return here, without the suit, would be July-
16.
July 16, and the hope would be before the end of July, maybe we could have that joint meeting.
But we have to plan it if we want it.
With respect, if we can kind of stick those on calendars and we hold our spots, if we lose it, we lose it, and apologies.
So, July 16 will be the target, and submission date, what, what do you guys need in terms of advance notice?
June 24.
Who?
June 24th.
June 24.
Does that work, Andy?
Yes.
I mean, these are not big things, I don't think.
Should we at the same time be exploring a possible joint date?
Yes.
Beyond the 16th, so maybe that we can-
Talk to the town board and-
Yeah, talk to the town board and-
Do something extra in July. Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
And so, next, next June, you do is-
It's a Wednesday, yeah, because it's tax day.
Change that mic, Gary. I'm not locking up.
I'm going to talk about it here.
We can talk about that.
Okay, we're going now to our next item, and this is an informal hearing for a pending application for Homeland Towers LLC, T-Mobile Northeast LLC, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, Tana Newcastle, application for a special permit, wetlands permit, tree removal permit, steep slope permit, storm notification prevention plan for wireless telecommunications services on Barnes Lane.
Good evening.
Sorry for the-
It's okay, you're used to it.
Exciting evening.
Many planning boards are just as exciting. My name is David Kenny, I'm an attorney with Snyder &amp; Snyder, Robert Gaudioso passes on this-
It's okay. You're used to it.
Exciting evening.
Many planning boards are just as exciting. My name is David Kenny. I'm an attorney with Snyder and Snyder. Robert Gaudioso passes on his condolences. He couldn't be here tonight. He had a court order scheduling that he had appear in. I'm here tonight representing Homeland Towers LLC. I also have representatives from Homeland Towers with me tonight, as well as T-Mobile Northeast LLC I'll be representing. And we do have a representative from Cuddy and Fader who are representing AT&amp;T on this application. There's a little bit of history. This is an application for a wireless telecommunications facility located on town-owned land at Barnes Lane. We worked with the town to locate the facility at its current location, which is in the heavily vegetated areas south of the Barnes Lane and Campfire Road intersection, to the west of the power lines that run along the Catskill Aqueduct Clearing. The applicants, it should be noted, have, in this latest submission, May 13 submission, reduced the actual height of the facility from 180 feet to 150 feet. This will obviously reduce the areas from which the tower will be visible from, and also the overall visibility of the tower. We've also have recommendations from the ARB to approve the design of the monopole at the taller height of 180 feet.
Oh, they didn't object to it.
They didn't object, but they didn't object to the sign, somewhat of an approval.
They weren't exonerating.
They don't have jurisdiction, so they don't...
There was no objection to the design. And the design has actually been further reduced from the 180-foot height to the 150-foot height.
We're going to do pocket vetoes here.
That's understood.
Now, you're at 146. You say 150.
146, I believe, is the median height for the rad center. The top of the steel is 150 feet.
Okay, thanks.
Essentially, we've received comments from the, or consultants. We've been working with the consultants to revise the application, provide the supplemental responses that are necessary. We've also, as I've stated, reduced the height of the tower to 150 feet to work with the town. We're here tonight to respectfully request the scheduling of a public hearing so we can just incorporate the public's comment to the record and get the application reviewed by both the public comments as well as the consultant's comments.
Okay, great. Sabrina, you got some comments?
Not very many. You know, I think that I can go through my memo. They've addressed most of my comments. I wrote two memos for you. One was on May 23. The other was this evening. The one on May 23 really talks to some of the visual points. And the visual consultant then submitted their review. There's one issue in regards to the visual analysis that, you know, the consultant listed a whole bunch of things that he wanted to see revised. I think in speaking with counsel and really looking at what's needed here, I've gotten complaints from the Cabin Ridge Road neighborhood. The information that was submitted in the visual, for the visual analysis, it was hard to tell whether or not there'd be any impacts on this neighborhood. The residents in that neighborhood have come to me in the office. They've submitted letters of complaint of concern. They really want to understand what it is they're going to be looking at. Now that the tower is proposed at 150 feet, you know, I think it is worth you guys re-examining, at least from that residential neighborhood who has come out and spoken that they are concerned. Try to do some new visuals for them, you know, and do it in a way that they can understand what it is they're looking at, what they will be looking at. They have said that they are willing to let your representatives come onto their properties to take the pictures that need to be taken. They want to understand whether or not they're going to be seeing this from their homes and what it is they're going to be seeing. So, you know, most of my nitty-gritty questions have been answered, answered in the positive. The visual resource consultant asked for appropriate renderings, appropriate, you know, analysis of the trees that are there versus the trees that aren't there. And I think you guys need to update that analysis because it's in the record now that it's not up to date. That information should be updated. And additional information regarding the Cabin Ridge Road neighborhood should be produced. So that's the main, that's my main issue. You know, everything else has been addressed.
It's my main issue also, so...
And I think you have an opportunity now because it's now, we all went out and did our, you know, we did our looks. We were assigned certain spots to look at. But that was with the balloon test at 180 feet. Obviously, at 150 feet, the impacts are likely to be substantially less. So, except for those areas that are very close, approximate to the area, which is, I guess, downtown by the bike path center, which is what I was assigned. And, but I think Sabrina's comments and suggestion is a very good one. I think will get you much further along.
We can revise the simulations. And we have been in contact with the neighbors on Cabin Ridge Road. I have Vincent from Homeland Towers, who's actually spoken with some of the neighbors and worked with them to discuss the visual resource assessment and their impacts.
Just one clarification. On the trees that were removed, those are the ones, Sabrina, at Exit 8? When DOT cleaned up that whole intersection, they took away those big old locust trees?
Correct.
And that was really just blocking the view from people coming southbound on the Taconic, right?
At 65 miles an hour.
65 miles an hour, okay.
And there are...
No commentary.
There are the power lines that go across that whole area as well.
So for the recommendation, Vincent Xavier, I'm the regional manager for Homeland Towers. And just as it pertains to the visual report that we submitted. First of all, the balloon float that was conducted on January 12 with leave-off conditions was at 180 feet.
Right.
At that time, we did send out direct mailings to a large number of people in the area. I double-checked. Everybody on Cabin Ridge Road received that notice. So if there was any confusion in the visual reports itself, everyone on Cabin Ridge Road was afforded the opportunity to actually see the balloon that day. My consultant from Saratoga Associates and myself both canvassed the whole area during that balloon float. I drove down that road. I stopped on that road. I could not find the balloon at 180 feet that day with leave-off conditions. With that said, reducing the height even further by 30 feet is obviously going to further minimize that, noting itself that the closest house on there is approximately 1,200 feet away through the woods. So I'm just not sure how much more of visual, a revised visual report would actually benefit. I did speak to one of the members that sent an email to the board. I sent him a copy of the VRA, discussed it with him on the phone. I'll let him speak for himself, but I think we left it in a good place. If he has any additional questions, I did tell him I was going to be here tonight. When it comes to the visual report, going through, yeah, we could go through. And as you can see in the report, there's an arrow that points to where it would be potentially through the trees. We could lower, we could show a new arrow showing it lower. But in addition to that, I'm not sure how much, you know, it's said to design it in such a way that it would be, you know, easy for laypeople to understand. I think it really is now. But if you did want us to revise the visual report before a public hearing to show that lowered arrow, we could do that. But like I said, I was there myself. I could not find it. And I really did try to find the balloon that day, and I couldn't.
But when you were there, did you have the same experience we had, which was we couldn't get on people's property? So we had to look at it from the front yards, you know, on the road itself. So that was a frustration I had. Except for one property owner who was a frequent visitor here to the planning board.
Well, just generally speaking, that's the way these tests are conducted.
Right. Not the way we like to have them tested. Because we've had, we've done others, it may be the standard someplace. But when we did the other tower that was on the road to Armunk, we had, you know, good visuals. And we had people that automatically, forthrightly said, okay, you can come on the property. And then you could shoot a good picture. And then you could actually extrapolate what it would look like on the second story, you know, where they might have a porch or something else, a deck out there. So...
Well, the only thing I would say, and I definitely understand your concern. The only thing I would say is, like I said, we did send notices, mailings to everybody. And we did ask the board where you'd want the pictures taken from. And we never received feedback asking us to take those additional photos. Had we done so, we would have been willing to do so. But nobody asked us to take those additional photos at that time.
Well, I remember when you first came in, I asked that additional photos be taken. You know, that, because the sightlines from the road are very different than once you move into the property and you go up a story. So I would, you know, one way to get around this is to do the same thing we did in Armunk, is that we set up a tree fund, you know, where people that feel, they can demonstrate that it's, you know, it's very visible and it's a problem, they could apply to you. You would come and plant the trees, and then they would be responsible for them going forward.
Mr. Brunel, chairman, members of the board, my name is Manny Vicente. I'm president of Homeland Towers. Been in front of you before on other applications, as Mr. Brunel mentioned. I think in this particular case, we have no problem revise in the VRA because the height is lower than we want to correct any inconsistencies there. We have no problem doing that. I think that I too is at the balloon test. And I can tell you, it's always frustrating when you can't get onto people's property to really see. But there's only so much we can do. I think in this particular case, I also know Millwood very well. And I've been trying to find a proper location for this facility since 2007. So I think we've looked very hard. We found a good location. I understand the concerns that you may have about any residents that could be impacted here. Vincent did speak to one of the residents that wrote a letter. He seems to be satisfied with the VRA and the work that we've done. There is one other resident. And we do not believe, and we've asked our consultants, that they cannot see it. Our concern here is not doing the extra work to make everyone comfortable. Our concern is that we do have a timeframe here. We do want to move forward. And we don't want that to constitute a delay for us in our project. And I think that because we did find a location in this particular case, and we're lucky to do that, very lucky, that is essentially very limited visibility from any residences in the area because it's between the Taconic and the power lines and unused area right now. So I think we have a really good scenario. It's not that we don't want to do the work. It's not that we don't want to provide everyone with that level of confidence. We're concerned about time. We're concerned our clients have a desperate need for this facility and have for a very long time. We went through an extensive process with, in search, we went through an extensive process with the town board. We've gone and done a lot of work with this board and your consultants. And we want to correct the VRA now that we lowered the height. We want to add whatever we can for those viewpoints on Cabin Ridge that are appropriate. But the idea of doing another set of tests, or another balloon test, I think is really what we have a problem with because of the time factor.
I don't think that's what we were asking for, another balloon test. I think we were asking for the couple of people on that road that are complaining, just visuals that maybe speak specifically to them so they can be relieved that they're going to know what they're going to see.
And I think we can do that.
Yeah, I think that's all we've been asking.
That we can do. What we can do is we can, whatever residents are still concerned, we can make arrangements, go to their property, take a photo. We computer model it anyway. We wouldn't float the balloon again, but we'd do that. And I think that would give everybody, without costing us time, that's really important to us, give everyone the confidence that they need that we aren't impacting those neighbors negatively.
Yeah, I think most people realize they're going to see something. They just kind of want to have a better idea of what they're going to see.
And you're absolutely right because the gentleman that Vincent spoke to after the discussion, after reviewing the full VRA, which a lot of people don't do, was very comfortable with what was done. So I think, I think we can do that. I just wanted to express our concern on time. It's not an issue of the work or doing it. It's an issue of time for us. So we're more than happy to do that. We just really want to proceed and get... And this is the other reason why we want to really get to a public hearing because there may be other people from the public that we haven't heard from yet. And we really want to hear that as soon as possible.
And are you going to send out a notice then to, let's say, everybody within the 1,000-foot radius?
I think we can send out another notice, or we can just reach out to the individuals who have already expressed concern. That's, that's an option, I assume.
I guess I'm a little confused about what you're going to do for these people. If you're not going to float another balloon, how are you going to demonstrate?
Well, the balloon is really just gives people perspective. What we would do is we'd have the photos taken from their properties and then have a computer simulation with the exact coordinates.
Okay, got it.
And it'll show them whether, if it's blocked and they can't see it, or whether they can see it.
So last fall, you gave us one of these maps, and you had all these different sites. But that was when you were basing it on 180 feet.
Right.
So now at 150 feet, would we be taking a lot of these sites off because they just, just flat out, it's not high enough? You can't possibly see it.
Well, in what we said, we revised the VRA to the 150 feet. Yes, we would revise the view shot. It may not change significantly. We would not revise any of the locations we took the photos from because we think it's still important to keep the same location.
Well, I guess it goes also to Dick's point, that is, you know, how are we going to notify these people? These people, I guess, were notified at some point because they were within these radii, which is up to one mile, I think it was a one-mile radius. And now maybe some of these people come off that grid because we no longer think that they have to be notified. They're below the level. So whatever it might be, don't we have some sort of information that we can supply to the applicant to hear the people just to send a notice to?
There's a list of everybody, the property owners, within the 1,000-foot radius. Yeah, okay. So it's a 1,000-foot radius, so it's, you know...
So why don't we do, why don't we do a few things? Let's update the VRA, number one, as requested by the consultant and Sabrina, which is very reasonable and appropriate. Let's reach out to the specific landowners, again, that express concern to see if we can take shots from their backyard if they wish. And maybe re-notice the same notice that we did for the, I don't know how we would do the notice because we're not doing a balloon test. Maybe it would be through the notice for a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, no.
And I think if we do those things, and I wouldn't normally say, let's not, you know, let's do... I wouldn't normally take this course if I wasn't confident from being out there, from studying the area, that we are talking about a very minimal visibility from residential areas.
And that's good. But, you know, part of our issue, of course, is to maintain some consistency with the way we approach all of these projects.
And I understand, and I think as an applicant, one of the things that we did in one prior application in front of this board on Route 128, Armunk Road. There was a unique situation where there was certain impacts with residences and we established a fund. I don't know, and we've had this request come to us before in other applications. Establishing fund for people who can't see something, not exactly appropriate or, you know, something that we should get in the habit of doing.
Sounds actually reasonable.
Well, as long as, when you go in the diameter, you don't find, you know, some issues and everything.
Absolutely.
And I think that, you know, the farther you get away from it, even if you see it, it's small.
Right.
All right, so I'm not interested in, you know, something with a biodyam or anything like that. So it's...
I think if we, if we do the VRA update, if we reach out to the neighbors and offer that and take the visual from their properties if they want it, and notice everyone for the public hearing, I think that's as much as we can do. And I think it's important to get those people from the public in here at the public hearing because maybe there are other folks that have concerns that we're not aware of.
And the other, the other small thing to sort of maybe help you a little bit more is that some of the homes are higher than others within, you know, the radius. And so the ones that are higher probably have more, should have some more emphasis somehow. So if you have photos from those houses that are higher, those would be the ones that might be indicators for others. And that then might help us, you know, suggest, well, all right, you have to, you really have to do something. But, you know, the one in Armunk, the distance between the houses and the tower was, what, 500 feet?
It was a different environment completely. And even in that environment, we had about four or five residents that have some form of view. And that in itself is pretty good and unique. In this particular case, I think we even have a much better scenario. And I think the distance between the proposed facility and those residences is much, much greater here.
But we had some technical issues that Bob and Steve had. So Bob, these are important. So Bob, would you run through yours and turn to Steve on his?
I take it that you have copies of the comments from the town engineer and the town...
One out of two isn't too big.
In baseball.
My comments are really not that significant. They've addressed the bigger items in a very good way. ST1 is basically just showing the boring test pits on the plan. Would say had a beautiful GeoTech report, but they just mentioned it in there. They just didn't put it on the plan, which they will do. ST2 and ST3 are the standard items that are always required under commercial development. And subdivisions require a maintenance inspection report in stormwater facilities and also performance guarantee and bondings that are required, ST1 and ST3. And G1 and G2 are basically just, basically G1, I reviewed the steep slopes, and it does not need a steep slopes permit. G2, they have to provide an engineer's cost estimate for all of the site-related improvements so we can determine the performance bonding and maintenance bonding and inspection fee in the amount of 3%. I outlined the three areas that should be included in the estimate. They gave me an estimate, but I wasn't quite sure what it was for. So I kind of outlined what they should provide in the estimate on G2. And G3 is just a minor item, which is basically just completing the stormwater application to include the contract. to include the contractor, and I understand, they don't probably realize, have a contractor as of yet, but it should be done nonetheless, prior to BTP. And I would recommend that all these can be conditions of approval, albeit prior to a site plan, signed by the chairman, or BPB initiative. And that's it.
Okay. Steve, your comments.
They've updated a lot of the initial wetland information that I've requested. And one of the key things that I had recommended in the previous meeting was to look at the feasibility of doing wetland mitigation on-site versus at an off-site location. If you recall, the Millwood Substation Project and, you know, the Millwood Firehouse, both of those sites had, you know, very tight constraints in terms of the ability to do effective mitigation on-site. And so I had recommended consideration for off-site mitigation, and, you know, the nearest location that seems to make sense would be Gedney Park, you know, to implement wetland mitigation measures there. That would be consistent with some of the other projects we've done. You know, so I just wanted to get the board's, you know, view on that, and whether we can provide direction to the applicant to move, you know, with getting more details together on that.
Do you believe that any of this can be done on-site, or is there just no opportunity for mitigation on-site, and that we should all be off-site?
I think given, I mean, there's two factors when I looked at it, is one is the remoteness of the site, you know, that the mitigation that would be done, and that, you know, wouldn't really necessarily be experienced by people, per se. I mean, it would still provide some minimal functional value. But the areas have pretty good old second growth, you know, forest community, and, you know, the ability to add a lot more tree cover, you know, layers really kind of limited just because of the way the property is shaped.
There's rock besides.
Yeah, and there's a lot of rock ledge, and, you know. You know, so my thinking is that, I think that you'd get a higher use from a standpoint of public benefit, as well as, you know, wetland benefit by doing it off-site.
On the drawing, there's something, a vernal pool or pond. And that's in good shape?
That's a beautiful vernal pool. And that's why, when I first saw it, I went running to the town administration and said, this is not a suitable site, and it's one of the few vernal pool areas we have that is, is really in good shape.
All right, so is there protective measures that should be made there that would count?
My experience with vernal pools and trying to preserve habitat is you're better not disturbing or creating new habitat, because you're dealing with populations that are already compromised.
Would it be part of like a maintenance plan, you know, that if it, relative to the construction activity only?
Only, yeah.
So I don't want to, I wouldn't want to see a whole bunch of, of stuff accidentally roll down a hill into the vernal pool. I'd be very upset about that.
I mean, in this particular case, the vernal pool is up higher, actually, than the site.
Ah, okay.
And so it's relatively, relatively well protected.
All right.
I believe one of the reasons for the chosen location at this particular location was to move away from the vernal pools, so make sure that this location wouldn't have a negative impact on the vernal pools.
You know, given some of the studies on vernal pools, I mean, there is a protection envelope of seven hundred and fifty feet, often recommended. You know, and so I had looked at that to see if there was any mitigation we could do on-site, you know, in anticipation of that, and I, I'm not sure that there's much that can be done that's going to really succeed, you know. That's my concern with, you know, the success rate of it.
Is there any value in taking a look at, what is it, mirror, there's a, there's another little lake that people used to ice skate on as you go farther south from this?
Oh, right, it's part of Campfire Club, you mean?
Not by the campfire, it's right, it, it's, it has some town buildings.
Echo Lake?
Yeah.
Echo Lake?
Echo Lake, that's it, thank you.
It's pretty far away, and there's a lot of roads in between from this.
Really?
Yeah. It's farther, it's farther south than, than actually.
Yeah, it's about a half a mile.
Yeah. And there's, there's the exit ramp from the Taconics right there. Campfire Road is in between as well, so I, I don't know, it's, it's quite a distance.
No, I don't remember, I thought Campfire Road was farther south, but it's okay. You know, so, because there's some, I've read some hesitation, you know, as to how much you could do in Gedney. That has to be studied to see if it's possible to fit it all in there, and I'm just trying to give it another possibility that's nearby, I mean, it's.
The only, the only reason I selected Gedney is because it's town-owned, and we have more ability to, you know, do follow-up maintenance and management.
Okay, but who owns Echo Lake?
I think it's private.
Private?
As far as I know, it's private in New York State. It's a combination of New York State and private.
Yeah, okay.
And the Millwood ballfields? Is there any wetland around those fields? How many of them?
There, there is a wetland in front, you know, it's a stream corridor, you know, that's between the tennis courts and the ballfield.
Place they could.
I could take a look at that area, too.
Close by.
The applicant is willing to work with the town to contribute to off-site mitigation. It should be noted, though, that there was a stormwater management report that said there would be no adverse impact to the wetlands on-site from the location of this facility. But we, again, we are willing to work with the town to do off-site contribution, or off-site mitigation contribution.
I would like to correct that there's, there may be no impact hydrology, but there's other impacts from the disturbance within the wetland buffer.
Small correction.
Yeah, a couple of other things that, you know, in terms of the site, you know, there was mention of the use of retaining walls, but the plans didn't really depict clearly how the retaining walls would be used to minimize some of the grading and disturbance, so it may be a way to just reduce some of the overall site disturbance.
Perhaps even tree disturbance as well?
And then when it came, come to tree disturbance as well, I think the wall, use of walls and then other tree well protection, there may, some of the existing trees may be able to be, you know, protected and saved instead of removed.
Right. Which will help your visuals as well, I mean, to the extent you can, you know, keep as many up there.
Well, we, well, as far as that comment, and it's something that we took very seriously, and I spoke to our engineers at length about that, and here are some concerns that we have about retaining walls. So we, we asked our consultants and the NE what benefit we would gain, and they said that there's a potential of four to five trees that we would be able to save by doing that. But some of those trees are already in poor condition, we're concerned that they're so close that their root, the roots would be affected by the construction, so there's very little, I think, benefit that we get. Our concern also about the retaining wall is that it's going to introduce more impact on the property as far as digging, there's, increases the potential of blasting, because there is a lot of rock here. It makes the project much more impactful, we feel, and what we gain out of it potentially is very little. We also have to think about the increased timeframe for construction. Whenever you do this kind of retaining wall, it would have to, portions of it would have to be at least ten feet tall. So we're worried about increasing the impact, increasing the time of construction, increasing the amount of construction vehicles, like cement trucks, that need to get back there. The other thing, too, is we thought long and hard about the compound and the size of the compound. As you know, Homeland Towers is a tower developer, and we want to make sure when we design something, it's designed for what's needed today, future growth, all the wireless carriers, there's a detention of public safety coming in here, there's backup power needs, et cetera. So we want to make sure that we have enough room for everybody, that we designed this properly, with good planning in mind for the future. So that's important. And there's also another, a design element here that's important to consider. There's a four-foot by eighty-foot area inside the compound that acts as water drainage area, and we're worried about compromising or changing that as well. So I think it was a good suggestion from the standpoint of, let's see if we can do something that will improve somehow the situation as far as area disturbance and trees, et cetera. And as we discussed it, we started realizing that the benefit is really de minimis, and the potential impacts, or the increase of impacts, didn't seem to make sense to do that. So that's, that's what we discussed in the last few days, based on that comment. I'm not sure if you agree or not, but we did take it very seriously, and we did consider it comprehensively.
Thank you. I have a question.
Dave, did you have any other comments?
Just to update you on the, on the tree removals thing, you know, updated our tree inventory, as requested, instead of removing forty-four trees. And if they, again, with the, you know, with not doing any mitigation on-site, they would be making a contribution to the Tree Bank Fund, you know, which represents just under twenty thousand, you know, if it would be the cost for the Tree Bank Fund.
I think we asked this before.
It's okay.
If there's no off-site tree alternatives available to the applicant, it must either be on-site or else just money. So we couldn't use additional trees, for example, at Gedney?
They, they could, instead of making the donation of funds, they can purchase the trees and do planting as well. I think that is allowed.
Off-site? Yep. Yep. We're fine, we would be fine with that.
My philosophy is if we're going to contribute money towards these type of efforts, let it, let it be meaningful.
Yeah, worthwhile, yeah.
I would go with the money, you know, instead of.
You'd go with the money?
Yeah, I would go with the money and then work it out with the town, but put a codicil that we prefer that it be done in the Millwood area.
Yeah, I think that's what Stephen referenced.
Just as he said, yeah.
The only thing regarding the use of walls, I mean, it's an effective technique to minimize some of the grading disturbance on existing trees. I would defer to Bob as well of whether the useful to see an alternate plan that shows the use of retaining walls to reduce some of the grading around the building.
It's up to the planning board, I mean, sometimes the planning board likes to see it to reduce the steep slope disturbance, but it doesn't need a steep slope permit to begin with. So it's not much steep slopes to begin with that was disturbed. So I don't know what a retaining wall would do at this point in time, anyway.
What would be the estimate of how many trees could be?
Initially, I thought there was about fifteen trees that could probably be, you know, saved, you know, and now, you know, they've since come back with a lot more detailed analysis, and, you know, the number is probably down to six or eight trees, you know, that probably, you know, could be protected.
Tell me, Stephen, the retaining wall would reduce the amount of trees to be cut?
Well, my concern, yes, that's, I mean, usually that's how you use retaining walls.
It's up to the planning board to decide that.
Yeah. You know, it's a question of how much grading, and then you're grading into the drip lines of, you know, existing trees versus, you know, a typical wall. I mean, there's pros and cons both ways, but.
And, and that's why we took so much time discussing it. When you look at our Geotecs, we're pretty comfortable that we don't necessarily need to blast to get our foundation in there. When we talk about, because of the environment we're in, when we talk about retaining walls and to do them properly, it's pretty clear that we're going to have to most likely blast in order to accomplish that.
Are you planning to chip, are you chipping up there for your platform?
Well, here's the thing about chipping rock, if you get really hard rock, it doesn't really work very well. And we know that from, from a lot of experience. And also, we've had a situation, for example, where a municipality wouldn't allow us to blast, wanted us to chip. We were there for, for over a month, and we didn't get very far, made a lot of dust.
And noise.
So, and noise. So I, I think, and these are, these are our concerns. I think if their concern is trees, it's a very mature wooded area. I would be more inclined to contribute more to the tree fund where somebody can usually use it for something good, than having the potential complications and additional factors to deal with in a retaining wall. So that, that's the way we view it. Because it is, if you've been on the property, it's extremely dense, it's extremely difficult property to work with and construct in, and we just think that it's, we're going to make a big mess there.
Unless, unless I'm mistaken, of the trees that would be affected and, and come out, aren't really functioning to screen the tower anyway from anybody's.
I would say no.
It's too low, right? So I'm in agreement that, I mean, it's, it's, it's like all woods up there, anyway. I don't think that the impact of losing those trees is going to be anything that would be really impactful. So I, I would say, yeah, let's put the, let's put it to use somewhere else.
And we would be happy to add those trees onto the fund.
Yep.
To increase the fund. That makes more sense to us.
I think so, because, you know, what's, what's a wall that's going to be a hundred feet long?
Buried in the woods.
Well, yeah, buried in the woods. At a cost.
A lot of work.
That's a lot of work.
Cost, that's, that's twenty thousand dollars, probably.
Whoa, it's.
Twenty grand.
I would say a hundred to two hundreds.
Okay, good. So that, that helps, too. It's not cost-effective, even from an environmental point of view, to save the trees, when we can do something else.
An environmental point of view, having that heavy equipment with all those machines running, I mean, it's, you just don't do.
More blasting? I don't want more blasting, I want less blasting.
Okay.
And from an aesthetic point of view, get the trees in a better area that the town can choose.
Anything else? That's it. Okay. You got a question?
Yeah, I had a couple of things, and maybe I just lost track of these, but they did appear in Mr. Cooper's letter, which I, I thought he was very, very helpful. There are two things that, Sabrina?
I'm listening.
Where did this, this go? Did it drop out earlier, and I missed it, but there, there was a mention of the Taconic State Parkway scenic historic register right-of-way, and the, and I guess you have an answer for this, and the restrictions on, on doing these sorts of facilities that close to them.
Sure. We did have a SHPO concurrence that discussed this issue, and it came back with a no adverse impact.
So the SHPO concurrence was not just, because I know there was some concern about whether there were other historic structures nearby, but this was, SHPO was also.
It's an all-inclusive.
Okay.
And they initially did not submit that, they submitted like an email or something, and we asked them to submit the full document that stated that.
And the Taconic State Parkway is in that.
But to follow up on that, one of the consultants commented that there had been a stand, and I think you mentioned this already, that there had been a stand of trees that had been removed along the Taconic that opened up a view shed. Did SHPO have that information, too, when they did their no impact when finding? I don't, I do not know. Well, should they have that? Because it does open up a view.
Were the aerial photos given as part of that, which would show that, that area that had been logged or?
SHPO has their own analysis that they do.
The mapping, yeah.
They have their own mapping and whatnot.
Any questions with the mapping's current?
So, so they weren't relying, I'd say, the two thousand and twelve photos as opposed to the two thousand and seventeen photos?
So, so the way that the process works with, SHPO is responsible for reviewing impacts on parklands, historic resources, and parkways. So they're the ones that have the jurisdiction of determining impacts on that. The way they do it is we do a filing through Section 106 filing, it's, it's, it entails a lot of different agencies, but one of the main agencies is SHPO. If SHPO reviews our submission, that's required, they have a whole application and all the information that's required, they review that. If they feel that there is a potential adverse impact, then they reach back out to us and ask for additional information, including VRAs, et cetera. So they've reassessed this, determined no adverse significant impact, and, you know, I, I think we can go back and ask them again, or produce that documentation for the board, but I think they, they generally do a pretty good job.
Yeah, the only issue is just the timing, in terms of what their analysis was based on.
Right.
What their information today is supposed to, before.
How, how long, how big is that opening?
Well, there, there was some.
It's the right south of the, the on-ramp from the Millwood area going northbound. However, when you look through that area, it's not shown in the consultant's photo. You actually see a great view of the two large Conus and power line towers that are there. So if there is an impact there, it's obviously going to be mitigated by the fact that there's already an existing impact in the area in the view.
I can shed, I can shed some light on that. Conadis and approached the town about two years ago to, they had a federal mandate to remove some of the trees along their high transmission towers in that area. And so the work was done this, you know, just, I think, last fall. You know, so they removed quite a few trees along the perimeter of the transmission wires on the northbound section. It's right by Warburg Park at the back end.
Are we talking about the same thing?
No, I believe the area we're talking about is the, it's almost triangular area right on the on-ramp going north, exactly.
That was cleaned up because it was all invasive material that.
But when you look through southbound as you're going sixty-five. But when you look through southbound as you're going 65 miles an hour down the Teconic, your view, if you do see...
55.
55, 50 miles an hour if you're being conservative, but the view that we're discussing, if you would be able to see through the other burn of trees and the other trees that are beyond this area of trees that has been removed, you have the power lines that are right there, so the view would be right next to the power lines that are in existence.
This is a completely off the subject, I sure would like to know why the state didn't come in and replant that area, because it just opens up that highway to Millwood. Yes, it also opens it up for, you know, the noise of the highway and the...
I mean, one strategy could be that maybe the town discusses with DOT and we use the Tree Bank to reforest that area.
I, I was just thinking the same thing, actually.
Or we could use, we could use some of this money, you know, available from this applicant, and if the state's willing to, you know, allow access, we could do that.
Yep, I've got one more, real quick. I've got one more, real quick, there is the restriction on this tall tower being too close to the property line, is that still a concern?
With the reduction in the tower height, we've now been able to meet the setbacks.
I thought that the setback was 60 feet.
No.
I thought it was 60 feet from the property line, your 150-foot tower.
The, I corrected, hang on a minute, I have the answer to that. You still need variances, there's no variance for the tower height because you're at 150 feet, but you have a side yard setback variance of 18 feet, which the planning board will need to consider. You will need a front yard setback variance of 48 feet, and you'll need a side yard setback for the tower variance of 90 feet.
And those are, the setbacks are waivers, right, by the planning board?
Yes, those three setbacks are waivers by the planning board based on the planning merits, the site plan merits.
And the 90 feet is based in part because it's sort of half of 180 and they sent...
You have to, they have to, it has to be the, equal to the distance of the height of the tower.
Yeah.
So previously it was 180 feet, they had to be 180 feet setback, they are now 150 feet according to their zoning conformance table, I'm hoping that it was updated based on what you now have, the variance would be 90 feet, so they have 60 feet, they have a 60-foot setback right now.
So 60 less 150 is 90, the variance.
Correct.
And I'm going to offer this up because we've done it on our last two projects in town, if there's still a concern about that setback, we can design the tower with a specific breakpoint.
Yes.
And I think that's probably a wise thing to do, it's, it's customary, towers generally have a natural breakpoint in them designed anyway, we can actually specify the actual height of that breakpoint, and I think that would, if there's any concerns on the setback, you know, I think that should...
That's a very nice offer, and what's the distance from the pad to the vernal pond? Is that, is that less than 180 feet?
I'm not sure.
Or 150? It might be, it's probably close, right?
It's probably less than that.
Yeah, okay, so cutting, you know, letting it buckle that way, if it falls that way, then it's uphill and it doesn't get to the vernal pond, which saves a lot of headaches.
And when they, and when they break, they, you know, they break in half, it doesn't fall like a tree, and I think they all have a natural breakpoint, usually some, at some specified point, but we can actually specify an exact height, and I think that might, would be smart here.
You said you did that on the other two kind of ones in town?
Yes, yes, we did, we, a few things that we like to do, once again, going, you know, thinking about planning in the future, we always built the tower to be extendable because you never know, generally, no one ever takes us up on extending a tower to date in 12 years I've owned this business, but that's smart planning, and the other thing we like to do is have specific breakpoints, just as an additional safety factor.
I like it. Particularly, I agree with you, you did it, it was really important with the one, you know, that was built next to the railroad track.
Correct.
We wanted to know about extendability because of the 5G situation.
Yeah, it's just smart planning.
Nobody wants to talk about that.
There was an article out today, that I read today, about 5G interfering with NOAA radar.
Yeah, there's also a lot of Russian bots that are doing all kinds of things in the near times. I read an article about misinforming about 5G, the New York Times wrote a great article about, about people needing to check the assumptions and make sure that a lot of...
Yeah.
Because it goes to our infrastructure.
The frustration that we've been having, or maybe I'm the only one up here, but, is that every time we try and raise a subject, the answer we get from applicants is that, well, we just don't know yet, we really don't know what the technology is, let me finish, we don't know, you know, how big it's going to be, where it's going to go, what it's going to look like, you know, we just don't know yet, so unless, I mean, I think that you probably, it's knowable, I believe it's knowable, and when there's a void of real information, of course you're going to have this stuff coming in, people are going to, you know, they're going to, they're going to believe what they hear, because, right?
Manny and I have been doing this in our respective...
Do you want to stand up, I mean, since you're dealing with a client, anyway?
Sorry, so Neil Alexander, I'm a partner at Cutting and Fader, I think Manny, you and I have been doing this for mid 90s, let's call it?
Let's not, let's not talk about years.
And we've gone through, you know, analog, digital, G1, all of that, and, and we've seen things happen where the equipment manufacturers are going in one direction, and you think the cabinets are going to be stackable, and then they find out, oh, when they start testing it, well, those things are overheating, so then you saw for a while a lot of the equipment was outside only, it couldn't be, so there's a lot of things that, I, I get what you're saying, I've seen antenna heights everywhere, right, and, and, and they've changed, did digital, satellite digital radio, they started with omnis and dishes, now they're, now they're sectorized, it keeps evolving, you can't fully project, I appreciate what you're saying as a planner, it's really, you know, frustrating, but there's, it's, it's not like there's a, somewhere behind, there's a door that you can open and you know, we find out as it rolls and it changes.
There must be, there's probably some people that, you know, are playing all the strings for planned obsolescence, that's...
This is what I equated, you know, when we, when we talk about these things as far as 3G, 4G, 5G, there are terms of arc, they're, they're not defined, they're evolutions of technology and networks, and they're still evolving, and what I equated to is, okay, so when the World Wide Web came out, what did we know about it, what did we know, the economies that it would create, what, what, what technology we would have, when we went from cell phones to smartphones, did we really understand what was going to happen and all the advances and all the uses? So 5G is very similar to that, the reason why there isn't a clear answer is because there isn't a clear answer. One thing for sure that I know about dealing with infrastructure is I've seen every evolution of networks and technologies, and when a company ultimately fully evolves, they evolve their entire network, not this site, not that site, the entire network evolves, and I think that's what's really important, we need more infrastructure to support what's coming. This project is important for the economic viability of Newcastle and Millwood, it's really important that we have an infrastructure, as an infrastructure developer in this industry, the advances in technology far outpace our, our ability to build the infrastructure to support it. So there isn't a clear answer for 5G, but I will tell you this, it is going to be a fundamental change of how we live and how we use technology in the future, we just don't know exactly how that is all going to come together. So I wish I had a better answer, I wish I knew, because it would put me in advantage of knowledge and I could do something with it, but it is, it is continually evolving.
Okay. Shall I stay with CD radio?
I'm sure you're right, but there, there are a lot of things to question in, in what you just said, I mean, about whether, you know, we're inventing this need so that we can sell it, I mean, that's essentially what it's all about, and whether it's going to affect the, whether we have it here or not, affect the economic viability of the town in Newcastle? I, I don't think so, but that's just, you know, I just disagree, we're, we're going to be captive by it, anyway, so we just have to, there are only problems, we just want to be able to anticipate it, because as we're building these things, you know, for 4G, we sure would like to know that we're building them in a way that's going to be efficient for the next thing coming, instead of having duplicate facilities or, you know, do things that are just going backwards, that's all.
Great, are we at the point where we can set a public hearing?
Yes.
Right, so is there a motion to set a public hearing for July?
16.
16?
Motion?
And we, just so that we understand it.
Well, before we do that, Jen, let's talk about timing, are we okay with timing? We do that because we don't meet in August.
Yeah, I, I think that that is going to, I don't think it's any sooner, I mean, let me speak into the microphone. So I'm assuming that the board is going to want to see the updated visuals for the purposes of the public hearing.
Okay.
The submission deadline is fast approaching even for the July 16th.
June 24th or July 16th?
So I, I think July 16th is reasonable, unless the applicant disagrees.
I would only request one thing, that's fine, we're going to do our best to, as far as I'm concerned, and, and I'm not wearing the legal hat right now, but I think we've complied with the code, I think we're willing to do the things that are asked of us on revising the VRA, reaching out to the people on Cabin Ridge Road, if we can't get the VRA updated and finalized by the submission deadline, we still want to be on that date because not meeting in August, that presents a problem, that's the only thing I would ask.
Is, is the board willing to grant that flexibility if it comes in later than the 24th, but still in advance of the 16th?
Well, within reason, I mean, it can't come in the 23rd.
At least be in at least 10 days.
10 working days.
10 days before.
It's got to be in a form that we can also show, so we have a public hearing, so that people can see it up on, on the screen, okay?
Yeah, we can bring in additional copying.
Right, exactly right.
Digital or analog?
Can we also go before Chalkwell Crossing?
Pardon? It's a naming, it's a naming opportunity. Want your name up on the board?
We have a public hearing, so we would actually probably put you before Chalkwell Crossing due to the fact that it's a public hearing, and if public are here, we always try and serve the public.
I just know too much about garages now, so.
We'll put him after Chalk. Good, all right, is there, so is there a motion to schedule a public hearing then for July 16?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And so Janice will get you a list to send, yeah, but they want to send, but they're going to do the notice.
I think we're set, so is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Exactly.
All in favor?